Yes, we are.
Okay, council, if you can come online, please. I'd like to go ahead and call the San Bruno City Council's special meeting of November the 9th, 2021 at 5 o'clock to order. And please have roll call for the public.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason? She's not present. Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Now, we'll move on to item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes for items that are not on the agenda. And tonight's agenda item is a study session on waste services and SB 1383. For any members of the public that wish to speak at this time on items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, the study session. Study session on waste services and SB 1383, discussion of SB 1383, California's short-lived climate pollutant reduction strategy update on the city ecology abandoned waste collection pilot program, discussion and update on garbage franchise contracting process options and timeline. Not sureing who's taking lead in having that update. I see the city manager coming to the podium. So I will turn it over to our city manager.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. As the mayor mentioned, we are here tonight for a study session on waste services for the city of San Bruno. Your presentation will be provided by several individuals, myself, as well as several staff representative from ecology. And we have our waste franchise consultant available as well. Why don't I go through the outline for our study session? There are three main items that we'll talk about. The first is all related to Senate Bill 1383, and we'll discuss the implementation of that. And so first you'll hear an overview of SB 1383, which, as the mayor mentioned, is California's short-lived climate pollutant reduction strategy. And really what we're going to talk about is the impact on the city of San Bruno and the implications, both cost and programming for the city. That presentation will be provided by Jacinta Lang, the public works analyst. Next, we're going to discuss details on the mandatory organic collection requirement that is embedded within 1383. And that will be a combination of the initial presentation by Jacinta Lang, our staff member, in the public works department. And then Kirsten Pinoki, the general manager from ecology San Bruno, will also provide a presentation to the city council on the implications of the mandatory organics on our current organic collection program, which is only for residential, and what it means to expand to commercial. Next, we will discuss the edible food recovery program requirement, and it will be Jacinta Lang again in our public works department. The second item is providing the city council with an update on our abandoned waste pilot program that the city in ecology started in July of this year. And so Jennifer Deanos in the city manager's office will provide the city council with a brief presentation to update you on the status of that program and the successes that we've had to date. And that report will run through from July through October. Next, we'll talk about our franchise, our integrated waste management contract, or our garbage franchise. And in talking about that, there are financial implications of 1383 that we need to adjust for, as well as discuss how we will continue the abandoned waste program should the city council decide to continue it, as well as talk about the implications of the upcoming contract expiration in June of 2024. It feels like a long time away, but it's not. And so that presentation will be provided by myself and the finance director, Chin Yu-Sun. And so we've allocated from 5:00, 7:00 o'clock for this presentation. There is a slide deck. And so what we will do now is we will actually have the individual presenters share their screen to provide their presentation. And so I'll sit down now, and Jacinta Lang, will you share your screen and begin the first presentation? City council, we are open to having questions during the presentation because there are multiple people giving a presentation on discrete topics. At the end of each of those presentations, I think we should pause at that point and take any questions on the content that hasn't been presented before we move on. So without further ado, Jacinta Lang?
And I think that would work fine, thank you for letting me know that. And if the person can say they're concluded, then we'll open it up.
Can everyone hand me in the city's screen? Okay. Good evening, I'm Mayor Vice Mayor and city council members and any members of the public. My name is Jacinto Yang, and I'm in the city's public works department. So today I will begin an overview regarding the state's SB 1383 organic waste production requirements. A quick agenda, I'll be going over the background, the timeline of SB 1383 regulations, and then our responsibilities as the city. So a little bit of background and some information on climate change. Climate emissions from the breakdown of organic waste and landfills are a significant source of greenhouse gas emissions which are contributing to climate change. So we're already starting to see the effects of climate change and environment, and we're experiencing longer droughts and warmer temperatures, which are drying out our forests and contributing to the increasing number of wildfires that we've been experiencing these past couple years. We've also been experiencing bigger storms and also coastal erosion due to sea level rising. So on a local scale, 71% of the landfill materials in San Mateo County are from organic materials. And it's very important for these organic materials to be disposed of properly, where they could be turned into compost, or we can use the compost or the food to create edible food recovery programs, which will donate these extra food for people to eat and need. And so a little history about SB 1383. So in September 2016, Governor Brown set methane emission targets for the state of California. So SB 1383 establishes targets to achieve a 50% reduction in the level statewide organic waste disposal from 2014 level by 2020, and then a 75 reduction in organic waste disposal level by 2025. And from 2016 to 2020, the state power cycle developed goals to achieve the goals of SB 1383. And in late 2020, the Office of Administrative Law approved these SB 1383 regulations. And these regulations will become enforceable start of January 1st, 2022. So cities must have their programs in place by then, and the state will begin enforcement. And by 2024, the city will be required to take enforcement against non-compliance entities. And in 2025, the state must achieve the 75% reduction target in organic waste disposal, and also a 20% increase in edible food recovery targets. So I've broken down the city's responsibilities of SB 1383 into five sections. So one, the city must provide organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. Two, the city must establish an edible food recovery program for all commercial edible food generators. Three, the city will have requirements for carrying recovered organic waste. Four, the city must provide education and perform outreach to all required food generators. And five, the city will be required to monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. So we'll need to adopt an ordinance that is consistent with all these regulatory requirements, and this is to be done prior to January 1st, 2022. So hopefully, we can adopt the ordinance during our first council meeting in December. So now going into detail for the requirements. So for organic waste collection services, basically, the city is required to provide organic waste collection services to each of our residents. This includes single multifamily and commercial businesses. Organic waste includes green waste, wood waste, food waste, renewable fibers. And containers need to be properly labeled trash, any trash, black or gray containers, blue for traditional recyclables, and green for organic waste. And as such, the city, we need to assess our current collection program and determine what needs to be expanded or what needs to be changed. And Kirsten from ecology shall be covering the details and provide more information about the program in an upcoming presentation. So two, I'll also provide a... Provide more information about the edible food recovery program after the college's presentation. But basically, the city, we must establish and enforce a food recovery program that requires food generating businesses to donate edible food. And then the county will be running this program on the cities we have. So procurement of recovered organic products, the city will be required to procure a certain amount of compost and renewable gas, which can be used for transportation fuels, heating applications, or electricity generation, which is produced from organic waste. And also, the city will have to purchase recyclable paper products. All paper products purchased in the departments must contain 30% post-consumer recycled content. And then we also need to require vendors to certify post-consumer content and recyclability claims. So then, to meet this requirement, the city will amend our purchasing policy to meet the SB 1383 requirements. Education and outreach, so this will require education to be provided to all generators and when applicable, mailers, any type of electronic outreach material may be provided in Spanish or other languages. And the city will work with our franchise employees to provide education and outreach to the businesses. to the citizens and affected residents as well. Compliance and enforcement. So the city needs to implement a compliance monitoring program. Since the regulations start January 1st, 2022, the focus during the first two years is educating the generators. And the goal is to make sure that every generator has an opportunity to comply before mandatory enforcement comes and should affect January 1st, 2024. And after 2024, it's when the city will take progressive enforcement against organic waste generators that are not compliant. So this will include issuing notices of violations and handing out penalties. And record keeping. This was just a list of everything that we talked about in the previous slides. The city must maintain all records of SB 1383 regulations. These records will just assist with the city submitting reports and preparing for compliance inspections by the state. So the ordinance that will be adopted before January 1st. And then we have to look meet the education and outreach requirements, also the edible food recovery requirements with the county. And then the city procurement will achieve that by amending the city's purchasing policy. And then the inspection and enforcement program will also meet that in partnership with Ecology. And that is a brief overview of the SB 1383 state regulations. If you have any questions, feel free to ask right now.
Thank you very much for the presentation and information. Any questions on that presentation from my colleagues? Please raise your virtual hand now. I see none. We're going to proceed. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, sorry, I can't move that fast. With all these new requirements, what estimate would it, is there on the staff needed to oversee it? This is a lot of work, it seems like, and just curious.
Yes.
What are we going to need to do in order to meet it?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Medina. So later on, in Ecology's portion, Kirsten will be able to provide more details about the additional capacity we'll need to expand to reach the collection, the organic collection requirements. Regarding education and outreach, the city and Ecology were already reaching out, and we do the regular newsletters and mailers to the city's customers with compliance and monitoring. We have annual reports that we already submit to the state for mandatory commercial and organics recycling. So SB 1383 is just an expansion of the organic portion. And I believe that Ecology is going to hire another zero-waste specialist to assist with all of this. And Kirsten, if you want to add any more information towards that portion?
Sure. Javon Grogen, City Manager. Let me jump in right before Kirsten. So in summary, Councilmember Mason, the answer to your question is in part, Council Vice Mayor Medina. The answer to your question is in part why we're doing this study session. Because each of the five areas has its own implications on both city staff, Ecology, or our waste hauler, as well as, for example, the edible food recovery program. There is a county-wide program that is being established to support compliance with that. And so the two main ones that we're going to dive into detail on are organics collection, because that has a significant implication on our waste hauler, because we currently do organic collection primarily for residential. Edible food recovery, there's a detailed presentation on that, and this participation in the county program is the staff recommendation. Compliance and enforcement likely will be split between the city and Kirsten. One of the reasons why Jacinta Lang is presenting a lot tonight is that this program is assigned to her position. And so she, as a city staff employee, has a chief responsibility for tracking and submitting a number of the reports. And with regard to procurement, there are a number of regulations within 1383 that require that the city purchase post-consumer products. And we've already had a number of meetings internally and are identifying our ways that we will ensure our compliance with that and will track that throughout all of our city departments so that we can report it to the state. I hope that provides a detailed answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from colleagues? It's time on the presentation we just saw. Seeing no hands, if we could proceed, please?
And this over to Kirsten over at Ecology to cover and provide more detail about the mandatory organic collection.
And are you going to share that presentation, Sinta?
Oh, do you want me to share? Thank you.
Great. So good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. I just want to add a little bit to what Jacinta already did a great job covering. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Jacinta. So she already went over exactly why this was, why SB 1383 was coming into place and when it was beginning. The part that we wanted to add was that, you know, Ecology is a pioneer of curbside composting. So we're very well positioned to help the city meet all of the SB 1383 requirements. Next slide. So SB 1383 does require all customers, which is residential, multifamily, and commercial, to have organics collection services that commingles the food scraps, which include the soiled paper products and yard trimming. And to help the city meet this requirement, Ecology has analyzed its current route structure and can help provide the city with the best cost implications for implementing these services citywide. So she did mention that by January 1st in 2036, all of the cities, all of the containers in the city must meet these color codes. So we're already doing this. So the recycling is already in the blue. The composting is already in the green. We have kitchen pails out there, and our garbage is in the gray already. So it's definitely put us in a very good price structure. It'll help cost savings in the future so we don't have to provide all new carts. There are some cities that are actually reversed with the recycling and have their recycling in the green and composting in the blue for some reason. So San Bruno is in a really good position already for SB 1383 in this regard. Next one. Next. So here's the big question that I will try and help you understand. So where are we right now? So when we rolled out in 2014, this City Council, or members of the City Council, approved the implementation of organics programs to the residents, and they made it available to multifamily and commercial customers if they wanted to subscribe. So San Bruno was kind of a pioneer, if you will, in regards to SB 1383. So I applaud San Bruno for doing this in 2014. It just puts us at a bigger advantage come January 1 this year. So I can see from the chart, in the commercial customer base, we have about, you know, about 600 or so customers, commercial customers. So right now, 86 customers actually subscribe to organics. That leaves about 542 customers that don't. But we took a deeper dive into the commercial base because there is going to be a waiver possibility. I won't get into the details of the waiver possibility tonight, but the city will actually work with the hauler and decide if people will, are going to be eligible to receive the waiver. One of them has to do with space constraints. The other has to do with complete volume that someone creates. So we kind of looked at the list and looked at the type of businesses that were out there. And of that 542, about half of those customers, we feel, may be able to get a waiver. So we're looking at about half that that still need to subscribe to organics to meet the SB 1383 requirement. Of our multifamilies, we're about half and half. Those numbers, we're missing a number there. But it's 456 that don't and about 494 that do. So this includes all of our multifamilies, our triplexes and above, our larger complexes. We're about half and half. So we do have some work to do in the multifamily area. One thing that I kind of want to mention in this slide is that you might be thinking, well, if you're just going to move it from the garbage into the green one, then it shouldn't cost anything because you're not making anything new. The key to organics is there is a high cost to processing organic material. So just to give you a rough idea, like it's probably about triple the amount it is to then put it in the landfill. So again, there's a high cost to actually processing organics down at the processing centers. Next slide. So SB 1383 is going to also require route reviews. So Ecology will partner with San Bruno and be able to do these route reviews. CalRecycle will mandate a percentage of customers on a route that we will have to go look at. We look into their garbage to see if they're producing a lot of organics in their garbage. We'll let them know. Thing that we kind of already do right now. So our Way Zero Specialist does this with commercial customers on an ongoing basis to see if there's contaminations in the recycling already. So this will just be adding one more commodity to those route audits. And Ecology, as a whole, as a corporation, has been gearing up for this for quite some time and has all the infrastructure already in place, such as apps on iPads that we'll be able to utilize in these route audits to make it pretty seamless. Next slide. And as Jacinta mentioned, there is additional education and outreach. Again, we're part of a greater good here at Ecology. So there are already things in process that we can help facilitate and get out to the customers. We push a lot of, as Jacinta mentioned, information into our annual brochure. We know how to reach our customers. And one of the methods is electronic. So we're gearing up to do some electronic information pushes to our resident, commercial customers, and multifamily. There's also, Ecology can also provide record-keeping and reporting assistance to the city of San Bruno for the areas of SB 1383 compliance that the city chooses to delegate to us. So that's kind of what City Manager Grogen was talking about, was that there are certain things that the city can actually delegate to the hauler, which would then just create those cost implications. And then we can build a complete cost structure for SB 1383. This type of reporting will commonly would include assistance with compliance reporting by providing, we can provide customer data, public outreach and education reporting, and not review record-keeping and reporting. And we currently already, as Jacinta mentioned, we already assist the city with our CalRecycle report. Next slide. That's kind of what I wanted to jump in and let everybody know and let council know where we were at as a city with pre-SB 1383 compliance. Thank you.
Thank you for your information and presentation. Do we have questions from council on the presentation? Vice Mayor Medina?
Thank you. For those properties that do not have the service for organics, what is it going to cost them?
That will be developed in the rate structure that we'll have to put in place in regards to SB 1383. Right now, there is no additional cost for multifamilies and for residential. It's part of their current garbage rate. And that was the rate increase that we did way back in 2014. We built that in for residents and multifamilies to receive that green cart. Commercial customers pay a rate for organics. It's 25% less than garbage.
Okay, so that will be determined. That's to be determined going forward.
The commercial rates are set, but with the additional participation that will be taking place, there will be a rate increase necessary to cover those additional participants.
And there, those that are going to be receiving that, are they going to pay more or does that get spread across the city?
Spread across.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions on the presentation? City Manager?
I just wanted to piggyback on the last question in response. Is that the way the city negotiates all rate increases or changes to the franchise agreement will be a process we're envisioning similar to before, where there will be a cost proposal for the hauler and implications, and the city will analyze that thoroughly and then negotiate with the hauler. And so the precise impact and how it's spread, we should know that that will be determined through those negotiations and approved by the city council. And so I just want to make that clear that this is launching the process. And because of the new requirements in 1383, we know through talking to other cities and talking to Ecology that there's oftentimes an impact to the cost, and that may translate in a change to the rates. And so we need to sit down with Ecology to define that and determine exactly what structure is appropriate, and then propose that structure to the city council. And then we will talk about the process by which that is done in a little bit because there are a number of reasons that are triggering us to sit down and talk about the franchise agreement. First among them is next year is a detailed rate year. And so we would be sitting down doing a detailed look at the Ecology rates no matter what. But 1383 is a new component that will add to those conversations as well as potentially others. And we'll get into some of those other conversations shortly.
Councilmember Mason, please.
Thank you. In preparation for this, what education has been done with the community just to prepare everybody for this change in the law?
City Manager, would that come to you?
So I want to go back to the prior slide because...
Well, and as you're getting to that, City Manager, was, help me, but the community outreach and record compliance and all of that is then determined whether the city can do it or it's going to ask the hauler to do it. And then therefore, that comes with some expenses.
Right. And so the ordinance, SB 1383, was adopted in September of 2016. The regulations were not promulgated until late in 2020. We are, we, like many cities are, now that we know the regulations, are identifying what those implications are and preparing to implement them. The first requirement is that the city council adopt an ordinance that will take effect January 1, 2022. The enforcement of that ordinance is not required until, the enforcement of that ordinance will not be done by the state until 2024. And so we have a period of time to ramp up that education and determine exactly how we will implement all the requirements of 1383. One example is the edible food recovery program. On the city council's agenda at the 7:00 PM is a resolution to participate in the county-wide edible food recovery program. And so should the county elect, should the city of San Bruno elect to do that, then we will begin to articulate that that is how we will comply with that provision of 1383. And there will be education that flows out from there. And so we're taking this in a stair-step approach. First off, educating the city council and then going through the process of deciding exactly how we're going to comply with all of the provisions of 1383.
Yeah, and this kind of listing just reminds me of how, you know, when recycling was being ruled... when recycling was, was being rolled out, the educational efforts that were taken around recycling. And so I think the second part of the question is, in Recology's presentation, there was, it was around kind of the pre, the pre-work that has been done around preparing for this. And have there been any educational efforts made by Recology with the community or with any other stakeholders within the community around this coming down the pipe?
Sorry, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Tarn it. Recology hasn't specifically put anything out specifically in regards to SB 1383. We would have done that with, at the direction of the city when they were, when we were ready to work with them to jointly put out some information. We've been pushing organics collection since we rolled it out in 2014. And prior to SB 1383, there was AB 1826, which was a push for commercial customers to subscribe. So that's kind of where those 86 customers have come into play over time, is that we've been reaching out to customers to meet that requirement. So to answer that specifically, we haven't called out SB 1383 in any of our outreach, but we have been pushing the organics collection.
Any other questions from colleagues? Seeing no other hands, we can proceed, please.
So the next presentation will be by Jacinta Lane. So Jacinta, if you can share your screen and provide a presentation on the edible food recovery requirement.
Okay, hello again. I will be presenting the county's edible food recovery program. And this is just one provision of the SB 1383 regulations that the city will meet. So a little background again. So SB 1383 requires that by 2025, the state must recover 20% of still safe food for people to eat that would have gone to landfills. And to achieve the statewide goal, counties and cities are required to implement edible food recovery programs in our communities. So by mandating food donors to donate the edible food instead of landfilling it, this will also reduce greenhouse gas emissions by stopping the generation of methane, so this ties back to SB 1383, so reducing the short-lived climate pollutants. So these food donors, they can work with food recovery organizations like food banks, pantries and soup kitchens, and they can collect the extra edible food and deliver it to the food recovery organizations. So who's covered under SB 1383? So there's two tiers of commercial edible food generators. So tier one, these generators must comply starting January 1, 2022. So these include supermarkets, grocery stores, food service providers, food distributors and wholesale food vendors. Tier two, commercial edible food generators. Compliance doesn't start until January 1, 2024. So these include restaurants that seat over 250 people, hotels with any onsite food facilities, health facilities with any cafeterias, also any type of schools of onsite food facilities, and then also large venues and large events. So any type of large event or large venues are categorized as seating or serving an average of 2,000 people per day. So these could include events at parks or park lots or any type of street fairs. Large, large venues include any type of conference centers or stadium or arenas or theaters. So county requirements for SB 1383. So the counties must plan for adequate capacity for edible food recovery. So the county's Office of Sustainability started researching in 2018 what would be required of all Samhail County under SB 1383. So the county plans to recover an estimated of 36 million pounds of edible food that is being wasted in Samhail County each year. The county also needs to determine where these extra food would be taken to and figure out what would be needed to recover the edible food that is being generated by these commercial edible food generators. So the Samhail County Program, Samhail's Office of Sustainability proposed one program on behalf of the jurisdiction in the county. So a county program would increase the amount of edible food that will be recovered and also save time and money in the long run. So a fee will be charged to the mandated tier one and tier two edible food generators. This would include a regular pickup of edible food. And this would require no investment in the infrastructure for the collection or storage of food, but instead of, instead of hands it out the same day that it's picked up. So it would take advantage of finding the need to refrigerate food or figuring out where to store it. So basically, once it's picked up, it's delivered to where it needs to go. And it allows for pressure food to reach the community members quickly too. And then the county has partnered with Second Harvest. So they are a food distribution or food service. They do food banks and soup kitchens and all that stuff. And the county will invest the edible food recovery program and respond to any complaints or reported issues along with record keeping. And they will deliver these trails to the city and then the city would report this towards our annual reporting or our 1383 reporting. And city staff is recommending that the city enter a MOU with the county so they could run the program on our behalf. If we choose not to, the other alternative is to have the city establish its own edible food recovery program, but we would need to find partner food recovery organizations and any type of food banks or soup kitchens. And we would have to do all the education and outreach to all the food generators. So again, city staff is recommending that we consider city enter an MOU with the county to run the edible food recovery program on our behalf. And any questions about the edible food recovery program?
Any questions for colleagues on this portion of the presentation? Seeing no hands, thank you for that part of the presentation. And if you could proceed to the next portion, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, members of the public that are joining us this evening. My name is Jennifer Dionne. I'm the assistant to the city manager. And tonight I'll go over with you the abandoned waste collection pilot program, this portion of the presentation. So just a brief agenda and overview of what I'll teach tonight. The pilot program and its background, San Bruno Responds, the tool that we're using, the current pilot program statistics, our outreach efforts, the impact of the program, and then of course we'll be available for questions. As you may have observed, there has been an increase in abandoned waste or illegal dumping in the city. These are photos, images that have been submitted with real time instances that have occurred within the city. As a result, we did reach two Recology San Bruno to collaborate. And this was really in an effort to keep our community clean and a continued quality of life for our residents. And following that, the city of San Bruno and Recology San Bruno did end up developing an agreement and turned into a no-cost or zero-cost abandoned waste pilot program that was effective July 1. It was a six-month program and it really identifies roles and responsibilities of maintaining this abandoned waste. Recology identifies and collects the abandoned debris and waste material. And, and what they've done really is they've had staff survey known areas, frequently hit areas where abandoned waste is left on a regular basis. Any waste in these, these areas are collected by Recology when it's discovered as well as additional areas that are in the regular route that the drivers drive there on a daily basis. And what we've done is we've utilized our San Bruno Responds to service the reported items. And it was really an opportunity to collaborate with Recology and our existing tools that we had available to us. So for anyone that does not know, San Bruno Responds is our reporting app where members of the public can either download the application, which is here on the screen, and report directly from the application as well as report on our website. There are two screenshots here on the, on the presentation slide that show how to report illegal dumping itself, but you really access this respective category. And there are many other categories that we have for regular city business. A member of the public can select the category, identify the location, description of what was left behind, can add a picture, submit it to us. And SB Responds really creates a natural workflow for us to respond to those instances. And in this case, Recology directly picks up all of the submittals that are entered by members of the public. This tool not only creates work orders and efficiency, but it also provides reports and statistics. And so for the current pilot program, we ran the statistics through the system for the period of July 1 through October 31. During that period of time, there were 196 incidences reported throughout the city. And on the screen, you can see just about 94% of those reports have been completed. That's equivalent to 184. The other categories submitted, received and in progress are really just as that district says. It's some point within the process when we ran this report as to each incident. And that's 196 total. Reporting the items, it's hard to pinpoint exactly what's dumped in each of these incidences that are reported, but it really is generally a household item. There are mattresses left behind, old furniture, bags of garbage, just general debris. Illegal dumping really happens everywhere. So here also from the system is a pinpoint map, generalization citywide, of where the instances occur. As you can see, a majority of them do occur on the east side of 280, but they really do happen citywide. The agreement itself has not really been promoted. That's an internal process. But what we did do for outreach is to promote, help keep our community clean. And that was an effort that we promoted through our city manager newsletter, through social media. We have lawn signs that are in order that we can display in hotspot areas. We've collaborated with Recology San Bruno on community cleanup events that are free to the public. And you will hear more about the events than specifically the most recent event in October at your regular meeting later. But those are opportunities for members of the public to dispose of their unwanted waste at really no cost. And what does that mean to the city? Although the pilot program with stellar city staff trash impact, it has been reduced, but it has not been eliminated. There was a reduction of about 60 to 70% of work hours as a result of the pilot program. And, and that equals about 70 to 80 hours per month that are directed to other street and storm-related programs. Those programs are listed here on the screen, but street relief work, potholes, larger replacements, street repairs, clean and inspect storm drains, street and repairs, replacement and street painting are just an example of how those additional hours are utilized by city staff. That is a short summary of the program. I'm available for any questions and I will turn over the presentation to Jovan, or city manager Grogan.
First, we have councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you and thank you for the presentation. I have two quick questions. One, the, the, one of the key benefits of this program is that it has the proactive component and the reactive component to it. It would so, you know, the, the, you know, monitoring of problem areas and picking up of, of stuff when the, the Recology staff were already out there encountering versus the, the stuff that's being reported by residents. Is there any way to track the percentage of, of debris that's in each of those two buckets of, you know, how, how much the, how much of what is collected was done proactively versus reactively?
So I'm, I'm perfect. I believe Kirsten Panoke from Recology is on and so she is best to answer that question.
Thank you, councilmember Hamilton. We tried to quantify for this presentation by asking the drivers. They said that when they sweep the residential neighborhoods, you know, they pick up about eight to 10 different stops, if you will, per day. We can't quantify that with tonnage or pounds or, or a number of items. We started to do that honestly at the beginning, but it was very time intensive. And to keep the cost of this program down as low as we could for this pilot, we decided just to kind of make it a little bit more general. So about eight to 10 times they get out and proactively grab items off the street.
And, and that makes, that makes perfect sense. Anecdotally, does it seem like we're getting more? It seems like we're probably getting more from the proactive than we are from the reports, just based on the number of reports. But would that be the correct generalization or is it just not enough data? And it's okay if it's not enough data?
Yeah, it's somewhat general. Sometimes I will give them a, when I get through the SB Responds, we'll give them the tag and they will come back and say, oh, we got that yesterday while we swept. So that does happen on occasion. But yeah, they're picking up a lot. There's a lot of spots that they notice that they visit every day. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And then my second question is for, for the, the city team. And that has to do with San Bruno Responds itself. I know that we haven't done a lot to publicize the program itself because it's, because it's just, you know, it's, it's a, to the, to the average resident, it's a difference on just who's doing it and that, that, you know, more is being done. Is, is there any, is there, is any thought given into how we can better publicize San Bruno Responds and, 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 you know, really blitz the, the public with it on getting people to use it? I've shown many, many residents how to, how to use it when talking, when talking with them. If they have their phone with them, they don't, they, they leave with it installed. But, you know, that I'm only one person and I know the rest of the, the councilmembers do that as well. But is there any, what can we do to get word out more about San Bruno Responds?
Councilmember Hamilton, let us take that back as a question. I know we, we published it on, on social media. It's in the city manager's newsletters. And we have a number of community engagement efforts going on on various topics. And so as you were talking, one of the things I was thinking is if we're having any community engagement, just have that be a part of it at the end out of the presentation, just anytime we're talking to our residents. But I know that we've saturated social media. I know that we've saturated our written communications and our website with it. But what I, what I take your comment to mean is just, you know, proactively think of any of the venues to push SB Responds as our primary avenue for residents to report problems to the city or areas or service requests, be they garbage or otherwise. Great, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Thank you and thank you for this presentation. This is, this is fantastic that this change is resulting in the efficiency and, and the work hours that are freed up. hours that are freed up for city staff. So congratulations to everyone. My question, my question is for, for the locations that are considered the hotspots. I think people that drive around certain parts of town, they know where they're at. What, what is being done to provide surveillance at these locations if it's always occurring? Like there's a couple of spots on Mass Dick, it's almost every couple of days, something returns, whether it's a mattress, a chair, anything. What, what are, what are staff's thoughts on, on that type of surveillance? And there has to be a consequence for, for people to change their behavior. And, and just curious, what, what's, what's in plan?
Sure. Vice Mayor Medina, within the city's operations, there are really two divisions that work on that. One is the Public Works Division and our Streets Division that still have a role in abandoned waste, albeit a smaller role now that this program is active, as well as the Police Department. Certainly, at the various hotspots, when there is a recurring situation of illegal dumping, I do see Dennis Bosch on. And so we have been going through bags and attempting to find any identifying information. That information is turned over to the Police Department. I also see the chief on. There are significant challenges, resource challenges to surveillance and staking out illegal dumping. And even with camera surveillance, getting identifiable information to actually effectuate an arrest is very challenging and resource intensive. And so those have posed problems. So I see Dennis came on. So Dennis, why don't you mention what's happening in the Public Works Department? And then if the chief has anything to add, we will receive comments from him.
Mr. Bosch, good evening. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Council and Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so for basically the, the areas that we have a consistent or we visit illegal dumping, staff on the Public Works side, and I do believe recology is also doing that because we had that discussion. We take the bags back to corp yard, and we do the unpleasant task of actually ripping the bags apart, trying to find paperwork with some kind of identification to whomever, whether it be, you know, mailers from in the mail, or whether it be any, any kind of paperwork that would identify who the garbage belongs to. We were successful several times, especially with one instance where someone was dumping garbage bags up on Skyline and on the side of Sharp Park Road. We turned that over to the Police Department. I believe the Police Department made contact, and we were able to stop the dumping, I believe, from that one portion. I'll let the chief, you know, expand on what they can do, but we do take that time. Also, I think what's important is that when we're at recology now talking about the hours, recology has, has freed up that time for us. But per the, the elements of the MOU and the pilot program, recology picks up the larger items, and then if it's smaller items, then it comes back to Public Works. And then we go out and we get the smaller garbage, or let's say gravel, you know, sometimes it's a lot of, you know, construction debris that's dropped, much like hamburger wrappers that get blown up against the Cyclone fence on Huntington. So that's the role that a Public Works staff still plays. And if it's, you know, on the weekend, we, we pick up the large items. So we're still involved with it. It's, it's helped us, it's helped us. And so we do all that we can to try to identify in the garbage and get that information over to the Police Department.
Okay. And I see our chief is an attendee, and so City Clerk Thurman, if you can bring the...
I've, I've been trying. We're trying to get ahold of the police chief now.
Okay. So why, why don't we pause on that? The only thing that I'll add to Councilmember Medina's comment or question is, one of the most effective strategies that we have is education and educational campaign with our community around keeping San Bruno clean. And I know that Mayor Medina has had that as an initiative of his. And our social media posts really aim to target that, to really create a sense in the community, because the dumping happens everywhere. And I don't think that we can assume that all the dumping happened from outsiders. And so part of it is educating our community around keeping San Bruno clean and not trash in our town. And so our, our efforts around that are maybe as important as they force them.
Councilor Mason.
Yeah, I think I just wanted to thank the FRS City has really taken on to ensure that, you know, we have this available program around abandoned waste. I know when I got on council in late November, there was a feeling that when you were asked by residents about cleaning, you know, an area, even I got this response, which was that's not our property, we're short-staffed, we're, we don't have the ability to do this. And so just since I would say 2020, to see the abandoned waste program, to see leadership, I think pretty much everybody on council has reached out to different organizations, to our county supervisors, to try to reach out to those organizations, but to really make sure that our partners are accountable for their spaces. And then to ensure that the city manager worked out this agreement with recology, I think just shows the importance of really thinking outside the box and really allowing our residents and listening to our residents when they say that there are possibilities outside of shrugging our shoulders and, and trying to just kind of wait for something to come along. So I think that this has been just very assertive on everybody from council to the city manager to recology to the staff, working together to see our streets be cleaner. And I definitely noticed it driving around. I don't see mattresses in the, you know, side of the road for weeks at a time, months at a time. There's, you know, a particular street I drive on where people dump pretty regularly, and I've seen that being cleaned up on a regular basis. So I just wanted to thank everybody who's on this. I think that the efforts are noticeable, and it's really nice to see things improving.
I have some questions slash comments. I want, I want to be clear, though, too, that the, and Mr. Bosch, Mr. Chapman, correct me. There have always been staff members that have picked up abandoned waste for quite some times. Sometimes they would spend a day just doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you. So that has been done. So I just want to acknowledge that and remind us of that. But again, there is only so many staff members in a particular division to take on the task. My understanding, too, is also city manager, this is a pilot program. So I know, and again, it is all positive. It is a pilot program. It's not part of the franchise agreement, to my knowledge. It is not, the city has not been asked, nor the rate payers, to have to pay for this because obviously it's costing somebody something. It's not free. But I just think that needs to be, you know, and please correct me if I'm incorrect in my statements.
Mayor Medina, I think you're correct. The city and recology partner on this program, the city contacted recology due to the increasing concerns about garbage, and we developed a pilot program, really for six months, so from July through December, to understand what effort would be involved, what results would be. And in the very next item, we will be talking about how we continue that program. And I think the success that we've seen in the first few months certainly has staff ready to conclude that continuing it in some fashion is appropriate. And we've had some preliminary conversations with recology about exactly how to do that. I know that they shifted things around in order to accommodate the pilot program, but it's important that we sit down with them and have that conversation about how does it continue? And what we said is that we know that that may take us a little bit until 2022, and recology has said that they're willing to continue the pilot program until we can fully sit down and understand the long-term implications of it and return to the city council. And so we'll, our next item, we'll talk about the process for that because there are a few options.
And I think it's a continuation of behavioral modification, as they used to call it, in my mind. Because, again, we didn't really advertise this, it was done. And it was also, in my opinion, was just so, you know, because if we go to the advantage, like it's there, it'll disappear, then there, it's, you know, I think people will tend to repeat a pattern that we're trying not to have, which is if you put it out for free, nobody wants it, please take it back and make sure it gets disposed of correctly. So I think that's important for us to still communicate that as well. So thank you for answering those questions. Is there any other hands? Seeing none at this time, let's get into the next item the city manager was just referencing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The very last slide presentation in our study session is talking about our integrated waste management agreement. And so that presentation will be provided by myself, as well as Finance Director Chin Yusup. And so really four agenda items, background, tentative timeline, contract extension, and then the staff recommendation. So as we get into it in a step background, the city of San Bruno gets to decide who collects our waste and who has that franchise agreement. And since July 1 of 1998, the city has had a contract with recology that has been amended several times to be our waste franchise hauler. And so that contract is set to expire June 30 of 2024. And so where we sit today, we know that in next year, 2022, the city will need to sit down and negotiate adjustments to analyze the franchise agreement with recology for some reasons. And so the first reason is our existing franchise agreement calls for a detailed rate analysis every three years. And so 2022, 23 is a detailed rate year, and we will be working with recology and a consultant that represents the city, that is an expert in garbage franchise, garbage franchises and, and the waste industry, to analyze the cost structure of recology and determine if there needs to be a rate adjustment in a detailed rate year, if not like the, what we call the interim years, which increase purely based on an index. So that's the first reason. The second reason that we will need to negotiate adjustment to our current franchise agreement is because of our presentation today and all of our conversations around Senate Bill 1383, the needed expansion of organic collection, as well as the enforcement requirements and deciding exactly where the line is drawn between the city and the franchise hauler. Important note about 1383, 1383 does not require anything of recology. It requires that the city comply, and we may have that compliance done in part by our waste hauler. And so should we have that compliance done by a waste hauler, which certainly for the expanded organic waste collection, we would elect to do so, we need to discuss that with recology. The next item is our very last presentation, is outline the terms and conditions for the continuation of the abandoned waste program. And so the, the success of that program and the pilot has literally recommending that we don't stop that program in January 1 of '22, but we continue that program and sit down with recology and talk about the implications. The next item is contract performance review has been requested. There's been a number of questions by members on the city council. And so as a city manager, I have recommended that we answer those questions and conduct a, a performance review as a part of the detailed rate year analysis and the work that we would sit down with recology and do in 2022. And the very last item is that irrespective of all of these items, should the city decide to issue a request for proposal for the, for our waste services, that's really a two-year process. Because if we go out with a competitive process, we really need two years. And essentially, it breaks down as a year to run the RFP process, and if the vendor is not our current vendor, we need to give the current vendor notice, and the new vendor needs about a year to ramp up. And so irrespective of numbers one through four, we would be looking at and analyzing our franchise agreement in 2022. And so integrated waste management services is a significant undertaking. It requires significant investment on the capital side, whether you are changing your hauler or not, and it's best to start as early as possible. And so we, at this point, we, we have a full, two years plus an additional six months because if we issue an RFP, we're really saying that that needs to begin in July of 2022, and the current agreement expires in June of '24. And so future services, we really wanted to outline two options for the city council. The first one is begin immediately and initiate contract negotiations, renegotiations with recology for a new franchise agreement, to include various items. The first among them is contract compliance with 1383, second continuation of the abandoned waste program. Other services, which up there says TBD, to be determined. One example of that is the city has talked about before adjusting how we deal for garbage. As the city council and members of the public know, the bill is currently integrated with the city's water bill. And so decoupling that has been something that has been talked about. And so we would look at potentially having recology bill directly for that service, as well as, as I mentioned, conduct a three-year performance review for the years beginning 18, 19 through 2021, as well as look into an analysis of how recology has satisfied the school program requirements and the existing franchise agreement, which has been a subject of questions from the city council. The second option is to initiate amendment negotiations with recology of San Bruno in regard to the current franchise agreement, which expires June 30, 2024. And so the important distinction between option one and option two is option two is solely entering into discussions with recology for a amendment to take us through June of 2024. The possibility to add any additional services is likely limited. And this option would certainly include the detailed rate year review. It's not shown in option one because we can likely incorporate that into the new franchise agreement. And so under option, option two really assumes that we are doing and launching a RFP process in July of '22. With both options, I just want to point out again that the three-year performance review and analysis of recology's school program requirements is embedded in each of the options. It's also important to note that option one is not mutually exclusive with option two. Option one, we have targeted a six-month timeframe to enter into renegotiations with recology and then for new franchise agreement. And if we are not successful, or if the city council doesn't like the terms of that, we can still launch the RFP process in July '22. And so at the end of this presentation, you'll see staff is recommending option one. And we believe it, one, preserves the city's right to enter into an RFP process, as well as provides a procurement vehicle that, the data has shown a renegotiation may be more advantageous. And so because we have the time, and from where we sit now, if we don't have to begin that RFP process until July '22, we have the time to renegotiate with recology and see if there is a new franchise agreement that is beneficial to the community and acceptable to the city council. What I want to do right now is pause and turn it over to our finance director to take us through a few more slides, and then I'll return.
Good evening. Kenny is our finance director. So I want to talk about whether we want to consider renegotiation for the integrated waste management contract. We received some data from... We received some data from our, from a past public utility consultant for the city of San Bruno. These are some historic data comparing renegotiations with the existing waste haulers and then competitive procurement for new service providers. As you can tell, the green bars in our chart shows are demonstrated the results of a competitive procurement. The orange bars, they just don't many, but they are, they are results of a renegotiation with existing haulers. As you can see, in general, the rating, rate changes from renegotiation tend to be quite a bit lower than competitive procurement. And, or if, if members, if the couple members still remember back in March, when we talked about raising the city of San Bruno's garbage rate, we polled 18 cities within the peninsula area, including our, including the city of San Bruno. Our rates are relative, were having relatively lower. Of all the 18 cities together, we are, we are the seventh lowest city in the, in the group, and we're, we're well below the median rate for garbage rates. So, it seems to, based on the historical evidence, it seems to be in our interest at least to pursue the renegotiation with, with Recology, just to make sure that our rates continue, continues to be low. July, I talked about a little bit about the timeline. Here is a more detailed look of past timeline. So you see a lot of sole sources negotiation, and I think that we really would want to ask that these are not sole sources negotiating, which is a renegotiation with San Bruno. So, based on our, our, January 1 of 2022 is when we need to select, we need to select a consultant with detailed rate review, and then to start a renegotiation process planning. And then by the 15th of January, we want to identify council priorities for the renegotiation with, with Recology. February 1, we'll initiate this negotiation for the contract extension and then detailed rate review. By June 1, 2022, we need to conclude the renegotiation and the rate review. And if the council decides the renegotiation was not, should not be the way we would go, then we need to have a consultant assist the city to start the RFP and franchise agreement drafting process. By July 1, 2022, we need to initiate, we need to initiate our RFP and franchise agreement September 1, so we will have to issue the RFP and the franchise agreement to the market. November 1, 2022, we need to receive the proposal from, from potential proposals to start our evaluation process. January 1, 2023, we need to conclude our proposal evaluation and start contract negotiation with the selected service provider. Our target date for contract order will be July 1, 2023. That means we don't, that's through the competitive procurement process. Generally, it takes about a year for the contract to prepare for a service. So, July 1, 2024 is our intended new agreement starting. I'll be back to the city manager.
So, thank you, Council. So again, staff recommendation is to begin with option one and initiate contract renegotiations with Recology for a franchise agreement. As you saw on the schedule, we envision that to be a six-month process. At the conclusion of that six-month process, should council elect option one, it will be our goal to provide the city council with a draft new franchise agreement. If that, and those terms are acceptable to the city council, that would conclude the process. But if they are not, the city council still has sufficient time to conduct a request for proposal process, and that would begin in July of '22. And so, that's the staff recommendation. We are here to answer any questions. I also want to note that while he did not present, Gar Scholz from R3 Consulting, who has supported the city in prior negotiations with Recology, important to note, R3 as a company does not work on behalf of haulers or garbage waste providers, they work on behalf of entities that contract with them. And so, Gar and R3 would be our representative in the process. And so, there's an item on the 7:00 PM calendar for the contract, but Gar is here to answer any questions with Gar to the process. And R3 provided the data on those competitive versus renegotiated contracts, and so he is available for any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you all for the presentation and information. I'll go to questions. Councilor Mason.
Just, if you, can you actually put up on the screen option one and two, just while having the discussion? Thank you. That's all for now.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, staff, for this report. Later on tonight, we're going to review this contract. So should we wait to ask about the contract later, or is it okay to ask it now?
So, if, Vice Mayor Medina, if the question is in regard to the scope of work or the contract that you would act on tonight, you know, I think that we can entertain those questions because we are talking about the process. What I would recommend is that we not talk about the action in particular that federal and the cost of that agreement, but in general, the process, we are talking about the process in this presentation and study session that we would undertake. And so, that is Jermaine, and if the city attorney has any comments, go for your chime in.
No, I agree with that. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Yes, I do recommend keeping the discussion limited to the process and not to the specific contract terms that are later on the agenda.
Great. So, that's a little complicated, but I'll go ahead and give it a shot. So, the study session, is there action that you're asking for, or is she here for us to choose one of these options currently?
So, direction from the city council on options one or two is appropriate during this study session. If the city council does not feel that you're ready to provide direction, that is fine. We have agendized this item or discussion around the process, knowing that we need to engage in early '22 around 1383, abandoned waste and other. And so, direction tonight in the study session and action on the contract with R3 is appropriate. If need be, we can also agendize for December 14.
I'll just go ahead and ask, because if the consultant we're going to hire is going to assist us with these reviews, my question to them would be, they're going to provide us with guidance, whether or not, and a recommendation on whether to proceed with a contract extension, negotiation, or put it out to be?
So, the consultant will support the renegotiation process or the RFP process or both. And so, it is the council's decision if you would like to go with the renegotiation process or simply the contract amendment process. What the consultant has informed staff of, in part, that was in the presentation, is given the one time we have, because we have six months to attempt a renegotiation, and given the marketplace results and the two options, it may be advantageous to the city to attend a renegotiation before going out to an RFP process.
Okay. And those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Other questions from colleagues? Councilor Mason.
Yeah, so, I, I think, and I think this is a question for the city attorney, but between the options provided, there's no option for a new bid, for a new bid or for a competitive bidding process. And so, without that option, am I to, are we all to believe that one would be a sole source? Would have to be a sole source? It's a new, if it's an initiate contract renegotiation for a new franchise agreement?
Before the city attorney?
But there's a note at the bottom here, too. Option two assumes launching an RFP process in July of 2022.
Right. Thank you, Mayor Medina. I just wanted to point out that selecting option two does assume that the city would engage in that competitive RFP process. In addition, option one does not preclude that process. Option one says, we're going to take the first six months of '22 to attempt any renegotiations. And then at the conclusion of that, and the city council has that decision, there can be a decision on if you would like to pursue the, proceed with the new franchise agreement or embark on the RFP process.
So, but if there's a new franchise agreement, wouldn't that need to be a sole source?
If I may, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, Councilor Mason. So I think we just need to be careful with the words that we use. So sole source usually refers to a situation in which there is only one provider of goods and services, and under the city's procurement ordinance, which does not apply to franchise agreements, but under other procurement ordinances and the state contracts code, cities can enter into sole source contracts. There's only one entity that either builds something, makes something, can deliver something, or can construct something. So here, we're really not talking about that type of process. We're talking about a discretionary RFP process that the city has the legal authority to enter into, as in item number two, as the city manager indicated. But the city also has the legal authority to simply attempt to negotiate or renegotiate with the existing provider, to say, what would you, what would you do in exchange for a renewal or renegotiation of the franchise agreement? And both of those are authorized by state law. The first one, option number one, is not a sole source, because there are obviously others that can provide the service, and if that's what the city council is interested in, then you can, you can go to option two, either before or after.
So I understand number two. One is the one I'm having some trouble with. So, because we're, we're in a 24-year contract with nine amendments according to the report, and so I want to make sure we're, you know, protecting the city, because we know that there are other waste companies out there. So, what, I guess, what's the method for entering into a new franchise agreement if we're not arguing that it's a sole source? Is that just something that we, as a city, have the discretion to do with the council's approval, or, I guess I just don't fully understand that, that part of it, without an RFP?
So, I'm not sure I understand the question. So, so we have an existing franchise agreement, as you noted. There's nothing precluding the city from, or nothing requiring the city to engage in further negotiations or negotiations with Recology for a new agreement. They could do that now, they can, the city can do that at any time, subject to the discretion of the city council. That process does not contemplate, in that process, going out and getting additional proposals from other contractors, because then if you're going to do that, you're going to do number two, which is a much more involved and costly process, as I think you've seen from the staff report. So, as the city manager indicated, you can do number one. If that doesn't work, you can do number two. Or you could simply not do number one, and then start number two.
So if we don't need to go through the R, so I'm sticking with number one, a new franchise agreement, because that's where my confusion is, what's stopping us from speaking to other company for a new agreement without an RFP?
Nothing, but what I think you'll find, and I think what our consultant and city manager may indicate, is that doing that is tantamount to number two.
Well, no, we're saving. My understanding is that from our last presentation is that it's a half million dollars approximately to go through the RFP process. So it's a huge savings if we can just go to any waste company and start initiating contract negotiation with X for a new franchise.
Yeah. So, so I'll just have something, and then I'll, I'll be quiet so the city manager can chime in as well. So I've actually been personally involved in those negotiations in some prior work that I did, in which that's exactly what the city did. And it is, it is not as easy as it may seem to simply pick up the phone and call another waste hauler and say, but what do you provide? It really does require essentially all of the processes and procedures in number two. And part of the reason for that is so that that process is open and transparent. So that's the reason for going through the RFP process, is when you talk to more than one hauler, then you have that process set out so that everybody is bidding on the same set of criteria, there are established specifications. So it's really quite a difficult endeavor, and I would not recommend doing so unless you're really doing option number two. As I said, you can't just call other people up like you can for a delivery of a paper and say, how much is your price for the paper? It's really not how it works in the garbage industry. So, I'll shut up and others can chime in.
Through the mayor, I was going to ask Gar Scholz.
And, and he was quick, he raised his hand, and it took me off. So, let us go to the effort. Thank you, city manager. Mr. Scholz.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, honorable council members and staff. Again, Gar Scholz, principal with our three consulting group, previously supported the city's last detailed rate review effort a few years back. So I, I think I understand the confusion here. Ultimately, what number one does, it says, before we commit to whether we want to test marketplace, let's see if there's a deal that we can renegotiate with Recology that would meet the city council's satisfaction. So it's essentially saying, you know, is there a renegotiated outcome with Recology that would, you know, meet or exceed the city council's expectations for your excederation of your garbage franchise? And at the conclusion of number one, if the city council's not satisfied, and you don't think the outcomes are as good as you could get from the competitive marketplace, or you need the competitive marketplace to provide backing for the outcomes of a competitor or renegotiation, you're essentially preserving your right still to go out to a competitive RFP. Whether that competitive RFP is, is something like a request for qualifications or an RFP process that's more formal, as the city attorney stipulated, is subject to some determination by the council. But ultimately, if you're not going to, if the city council does not desire to renegotiate with Recology, then the RFP process or something similar to it really is necessary. That's largely because there's a lot of details that you would need to provide another garbage company in order for them to provide meaningful and binding rate and compensatory proposals to the city that they could stand behind. Outside of providing those details in a public format, it can be very difficult for any garbage company to provide something or a proposal to you that you would be able to have confidence in and that they'd be able to stand behind for 10 or 15 years, or however long that agreement might be. So ultimately, the difference between number one and number two is, number one, this gives you that option to first see if there's a deal that you can achieve with Recology to extend and renegotiate that agreement with them now, and if not, still preserve your right to move to an RFP process. I do think some of the language on this slide also might provide some of the confusion, which is number two also recognizes that in the short term, you still have some needs to fulfill even as you proceed towards an RFP process. Those needs being, of course, the abandoned Those needs being, of course, the abandoned waste program, which may be of interest to the city, and some of those near-term actions to provide for compliance under S-1383. But I do hope that clears it up, and I'm here for any additional questions you might have. We do tend to, in situations the cities in where you've got rates that are, you know, well within the realm of normal for your jurisdictional area. And, you know, generally speaking, I think probably some sense of overall satisfaction with the services that renegotiating first as your first course of action can be fruitful and can be advisable. Typically, cities that choose not to renegotiate and go to an RFP, it's either because they've got statutory language that says that they have to do that, or they've just had a dissatisfactory relationship with their incumbent hauler over the course of time and need to go to the marketplace.
Thank you for chiming in and going through that for us. Thank you. Councilor Mesa.
Yeah, so I, I just want to, I guess my concern is just that we have, my understanding from, I believe, the last presentation that we got a while ago is that we have probably the longest-standing garbage contract right now with Recology in the county by about 10 years. And so I want to make sure that, that there is, if there's competitive bidding that is part of being a government entity, that we are, you know, just aware that that's something that's out there. And if that's a choice that we do not choose to pursue, that we're really clear on why we're not pursuing it when there are other companies available. So for example, Piedmont was one of the examples that were given in the staff report. But the, the increase, there was only one response to that bid. Windsor, which I believe R3 also represents, you know, includes the Unified School District and the Fire District. And there was a shortfall, which was quite significant, which there was an increase for. You know, I think Santa Rosa, Recology purchased shortly after the increases went into effect. So I think there are all these details that are also included that, you know, make up for these differences. And when we're looking here, I want to make sure that we truly are looking out for the best interest of the residents. And would that be through a competitive process? Or if they're sticking with Recology, I don't know. I just know that when I saw those charts, it made me look further into why these huge increases and there are details that are not specific to here in San Bruno, right? And so, and I also want to make sure that we are aware of what the legal risks are when there are other waste companies out there that may be interested in bidding. I don't know. I don't know what the likelihood is of being, you know, receiving one bid versus two or three. So I would just put all that out there. I would also throw in that I don't think a three-year performance review is nearly enough. I believe that the normal practice around companies maintaining records is five to seven years. And I think that if there's going to be a review of Recology's performance, it should be a minimum of five to seven years. I would prefer seven. And, and really specifically around how much money has been raised by Recology for the schools. I know that the day after the last rate increase where I voted no, we received a letter of these, you know, code drives that Recology has sent to the schools and a number of, you know, this list of things that Recology's done that are not in the contract. And are great. I mean, they're good faith and there's no, I don't have a, an issue one way or the other around it. But I do want to focus in on the contract and what the requirement happened for 24 years. And the fact that, you know, that is a need of the schools. And so these alternates that are not part of the contract really shouldn't be part of the performance review. And so what, what does that look like? And, and I don't know what kind of direction is needed or what kind of support. I definitely support this review. But I'd like some direction from the city manager on what's needed from the council to really hone in on, on the, the needs that are described within the contract of the schools. And realistically, how far back we're going to look. And I would just add to that, that, you know, the last request was a year and a half was incredibly disappointing because a year of that was in COVID. So that's one of the reasons I'm really, again, this three-year look back because we've been in COVID for almost two years now. It really does need to be, to be realistic, I think, five to seven years, preferably seven years.
So through the mayor, Councilwoman Mason, in response to Councilwoman Mason's question, the three-year performance review beginning in FY 1819 was, was really targeted, one, to get us out of the timeframe of COVID, but also to align when, when the last detailed rate year review was. However, analysis that is particular to Recology's school program requirements can be longer. So direction from the city council on having that particular piece be five or seven years is appropriate. And we, we can take that direction and we, we won't have time to, to determine if there's any increase with the R3 contract or we can adjust, we can do that adjustment later. But I think in this study session, if the city council wanted to provide direction on how long to look back on the school program requirements are, we could certainly take that back and incorporate it and determine what any impact it has on the work that R3 will do for us. But that's the call for that work.
Other questions from colleagues? Any other comments from colleagues? I want to see if there's anybody else first, Councilwoman Mason, just to get everybody in, who, who chooses at this time? Okay, we're seeing no other hands. Councilwoman Mason.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I know you answered this earlier. I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear on the, the item that's on tonight's agenda, 7A. So right now, you're looking for direction on one or two or, or neither, but, or yeah, if the council agrees with neither, or should, or are we to wait? But later, it looks like it, I mean, it's just the contract with R3. So I guess I'm just, since I'm not hearing from the other council members, I'm just not sure exactly what, what's going on right now and what you get from us.
So with regard to direction for this meeting, it, it would be nice to know if the, the city council is preferring option one or, or option two. With regard to the R3 contract that is on tonight's 7:00 PM agenda, that, that includes a total amount. I can build to that. Probably easier said by saying that does not include the approximate $500,000 for the RFP process. But it does include the detailed rate review as well as the, the performance review. And so we could be, we have to, we have to negotiate with Recology in any event in the next six months. Detailed rate, SB 1383 compliance and continuation of abandoned waste, as well as I believe there's an interest in doing the performance review. So those need to occur. The question is, that we're talking about in, at this study session, is those conversations that will occur over the next six months, are they geared toward renegotiating the franchise agreement, which is option one, or option two? Are they really solely geared toward an amendment to get us through to June of 2024? And then if it's option two, we will, at some point, because option two assumes the RFP process, be coming back to this, to the city council fairly quickly to determine the, the full cost of the RFP process and, and do that contract, because we know that we will be launching that. And so the direction, in sum, in summary, that we're really looking for in the study session is does the city council prefer to initiate with option one and preserve the right to do the RFP process, depending on the conclusion of option one, or proceed with option two, which is solely a contract amendment of the existing franchise agreement that will go through June 30, 24. I hope that helps.
Yep. And then the last question is just between the regard list of one, well, actually focusing on one still. The council would receive an update on what the rates would be if this was a new agreement and then still have the opportunity to go out for RFP, even knowing the rates in advance. If, so if we looked at the rates and we said, no, we don't agree with this, we pursue, we can still go out and pursue an RFP. Is that right?
Absolutely. 100%. Option one does not foreclose going out for an RFP process.
Okay, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. The hands are up. I want to do a time check that we're about 6:45. So we're going to go around once. Anyone who wants to make their comments and, and known as the city manager's asked. First, we'll go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have work that needs to be negotiated in option one and option two that, that would be covered. In option one, have we received any official notice of interest to be, for the contract to be renegotiated?
Yes, Recology is interested in renegotiating for a franchise agreement, a continuation of services beyond June of 24.
Provided, we, we do reserve the right to, to review that and, and move on if, if need be. I, I see no issue with, with proceeding in that direction. So I'll wait to hear from my colleagues.
Well, we're, we're only going to go around once, but I mean, are you?
I already said what I said, sir.
Huh?
I said what I said.
Okay, because I'm just trying to make notes I didn't understand. So that's why I'm asking for clarity, Vice Mayor, if that's okay. Was, was there a selection made or you're just, you want to wait and come back around again?
I said I was in favor of one.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
And I would like to hear from my colleagues.
Yeah, absolutely. Councilmember Hamilton. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
I'm in favor of starting with option one, specifically because it, because it doesn't preclude doing an RFP later. And I'm also in favor of extending the, the, the performance review period beyond three years, because the three years there would have two COVID years in it. So just, just so that we get good data, as was stated earlier. So I'm in favor of option one.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Mason.
Yeah, so barring any legal issues, which I'll leave to our city attorney, I am okay with option one if that's in the best interest of the residents based on the chart we were given. But I would ask for a seven-year performance review. And I would want to make sure that it sticks to what the contract is and not go outside of what the contract is. So again, these responses we got about other things that have been done outside the contract are, are not part of the contract as I see it. So I want to make sure we stick to the letter of the contract. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Apologize for that. I, I'm in favor of extending, and if it's seven years, that's fine.
Sorry, good on you. Okay, Councilmember Salazar.
And for my part, I'm, I'm okay with option one and pursuing that. And just, you know, I, I understand the, the interest in, in doing the longer investigation, but as someone who's been on the receiving end of that type of request and, and understanding how much effort is involved in, in sorting through historical records, I, I would ask for clarification in terms of what it is we're looking for and what we intend to do with that information once we find it before committing to that, that long-term deep dive of, of historic information. I, I suspect that some of that information may be very difficult to find. And so it, it's going to take a lot of work.
City Manager, clarification was been asked. If, if you or Garth or whoever might have it best, please.
Sure. I would ask for clarification from the council. Is it extending the analysis of, of Recology's school program requirements back seven years so that a component or was it desire articulated by the three council members to extend the entire performance review back seven years?
How I had it listed was the performance review, I heard two say seven, one just say extend. And Councilmember Salazar was asking more specific that the detail was being asked for. So how challenging is it? What value will it have? I think that he was trying to get that quantified more.
And through the mayor, I also want, want to clarify that in the initial part, if anything is discovered in the first three years, the, the city would certainly come back to, to the city council and I think preserve the right to go back further. So I, I think the core question is, at this point, does council desire full seven-year performance review? Or because a detailed rate review was done three years ago, who limit the performance review to what has been articulated as a concern, which is Recology's school program requirements?
Councilman Salazar did that. I don't know, did that answer?
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that addresses, you know, what we would be looking in. And then again, also, I, I want to understand what the, the impact or what it is that we, we hope to accomplish with any information that's, that's uncovered. Would it be to recoup? You know, anything that was paid previously and if that's even possible, or if it is to, you know, somehow influence or change the terms of any future agreements? I, I, I kind of want to know where we're going with this information. So yeah, and any clarification on that would be helpful.
In prior meetings, there was a question and it raised by council and then answered by it from Recology with regard to programs for the schools that were fundraisers. And due to lack of interest, we know that in some years, those programs were not provided. And I think the question that has been articulated from some members of the city council is to confirm that through the performance review and then should that be confirmed, identify what is the correction? And so, you know, I think we don't want to hypothesize what the correction or would be, but we want to step back and say, we have a question. Let's have our consultant look into it based on what comes back. And, and part of this is a documentary review and an analysis of exactly what the contract says. So we're not presuming at this point that the, that there was any violation of, of the contract. What, what we're simply saying is that there's been a question, there's been an answer, and then there needs a little bit more clarification. And so that's what, I think that's what would be solved from the performance review. And here, desire to go back up to seven years. And I, I believe I've heard that with regard to the school program requirements, and I just want to clarify that with the city council. And then, and then I think we have a clear direction subsequent to, I think, the mayor finishing going through all the council's direction.
Thank you. Just so we can get, I'm also in favor of one, so that's all five of us in concurrence with that. So let's just get that out of the way. Then let's go through quickly, keeping in mind that we are at 6:52. Councilmember Mason, then Vice Mayor Medina, then Councilmember Hamilton. Just go one right after the other, please.
Yeah, so I think there's two issues that were raised and one of which is on my council comments tonight. So I guess we're talking about it already. But one is around, just to be clear, it's all of section five. I believe section five covers the school and the benefits to the city. So it would be the section five in particular. And I, I heard the city manager say, you know, we don't, that there's a, that there's a lack of interest. But I want to again be clear, when we hear something like, we, we know that there's a lack of interest, how, how do we know that? Where's the written documentation? The email to the school asking, you know, for this opportunity? And I think that it needs to be clear. And if it's not clear, then I don't want to make any assumptions of what did or didn't happen. Really, what's, what's the outcome? Something did or didn't happen. And so for the review, I want to be really clear about the expectation. And then the other part of that is, how is it going to be remedied for those years that it wasn't done? And then how, thinking forward as we look at the new franchise agreement, how can we? how can we assist our schools if the current agreement is outdated in the methods? So, one remedy for anything not accomplished to the school or to the city under the community benefits area, Section 5. And then, two, is the remedy for that, I guess, and then three would be moving forward, what does that look like in an agreement in 2021 moving forward?
Thank you, Councilmember Mason. That's the clarification I was looking for.
Mr. Medina.
Yes, thank you. I'm fine with all that. The three-year performance review, as noted here, is separate from the school review. So, the school review of the seven years, I'm fine with that, and defined of the limits, as mentioned by Councilwoman Mason, I'm fine with those two.
Councilmember Hamilton.
I concur. The seven years on the school program requirements and the rest as noted by Councilmember Mason.
And my only caveat to that, because I think everybody else has spoken, is, again, I don't want it dissected to where it only does this or that. I want it to be looked at, it's going to be done independently, and for that to be brought back, and it brought back in the report as they look at it. The City Manager, are you feeling that you have the answer?
Absolutely. Thank you, City Council. I think I'm viable with the direction to proceed with Option 1, knowing that that does not preclude a RFP process, include a three-year performance review with the addition of a seven-year performance review of Section 5 of the contract. And so, we will proceed, and I think that can be accomplished by the contract that is on tonight's agenda, and if there needs to be a minor modification in the scope due to the Look at Section 5, we will bring that to the city council separately.
Okay, thank you. So, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting to, in a few minutes, we'll see you all at 7:00. See you momentarily. City Clerk, are we ready to go?
I do not see city staff yet in City Hall. The rest of us are ready. Mayor, if you can give me one moment, I am trying to find out.
Absolutely. We're just waiting for everybody to be online, and we will begin the meeting momentarily. I see City Hall coming online. City team, City Hall, are you ready?
Yes, we are ready.
Okay, so, this is, I'd like to please call the regular San Bruno City Council meeting of November the 9th to order, and I would ask if our city clerk would please take role.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here.
And I want to thank Councilmember Hamilton for offering and leading us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. Thank you very much for doing that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton, I appreciate it. Let's move on to item number four, public comments for item not on the agenda. Individuals be allowed up to three minutes. It is council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Any folks of the audience, if you could please raise your hand, and we will start to have the city clerk bring you in, and again, this is for items not on tonight's agenda.
First, we'll start with Paul Wapensky.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready, Paul.
Thanks. Veterans Day is on Thursday, and I'd like to acknowledge all the veterans who have served the United States in peace and at war. And tomorrow is a very special day for some of us, and it's the 246th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. And to all the Marines who live in San Bruno, who have served their four years and moved on or retired after 30 years as I did, I'd like to wish you all a happy birthday, and remember those you serve with. Semper Fi.
And sir, to you, on behalf of all of us, thank you for your service. And an early Happy Veterans Day to you. Next, please.
Next is Robert Whitehair.
Mr. Mayor, City Council staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight before the council. My name is Robert Whitehair, a resident of San Mateo, a former city of San Bruno employee, and I might add, a former Marine myself. As an active volunteer with the Fossil Free Buildings Silicon Valley Campaign at San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties, I'm here tonight with an opportunity for those San Bruno residents and business owners thinking about more electrification. There are four areas where all of us can take personal actions to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that are causing earth to heat up. These are the electricity supply, transportation, buildings, and industrial emissions. By being part of Peninsula Clean Energy, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and some other parts of the world, the city of San Bruno, its residents and businesses can already check off as done the elimination of greenhouse gases from the electricity supply. As a member of the Fossil Free Buildings Campaign, I'm here to update you on our work and introduce a program that you and your city residents may want to use. To assist residents in switching their homes to electric or as much electric as possible, we have started a volunteer ambassador program, of which I am one. Individuals such as me, who have switched one or more of their home heating, water heating, cooking, or other appliances, are available to answer questions from others who want to make the switch or who are thinking about it. This free service will provide information on rebates, suggestions about how to get started, informal referrals to electric contractors, by the way, we don't represent any one contractor, we can give you a list, and recommendations on equipment. To get in touch with the Home Electrification Ambassador, simply go to the website of fossilfreebuildings.org, scroll down to the button for the Electric Home Ambassador Program, fill in the form with your contact information, and answer a few questions so we can help you. An ambassador will get in touch with suggestions and information. Again, the website is fossilfreebuildings.org. We look forward to hearing from any resident or business owner who has questions about how to switch to electric. Thank you for your time tonight.
And thank you to you as well for that, and I thought the name did look familiar. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Al Kamali.
Good evening. My name is Al Kamali, and I'm with the Citizens for a San Mateo County Gun Buyback. Over the past few years, our organization has raised funds to distribute during buyback events. Our group is assisted by the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, who actually managed the event, along with assistance from the Belmont and Redwood City Departments. I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to speak with you about an upcoming buyback event that'll take place on Saturday, December 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in San Carlos at 1,000 Skyway Road, right off 101. Firearms should be transported unloaded and in the trunk of vehicles. $100 will be given out for handguns, shotguns, and rifles, and $200 for assault weapons. We encourage all communities to help spread the word to residents. We have sent a copy of a postcard and flyer to city administrative officers with the hope that you'll partner with us in promoting this important event. We hope to see you there, and thank you very much for allowing me to address you this evening.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your comments. Are there any other speakers, City Clerk?
There are no other speakers, Mayor Medina.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to announcements and presentations. Item A, receive update from Recology San Bruno regarding the fall cleanup event that was held on October 23rd last month. I can see the General Manager from Recology is being brought in, and I believe we will be turning the meeting or presentation and some information.
Yes, does the city have the presentation share on the screen at all? No? The slide deck is... Nope, okay. Well, I will go without the slide deck, and I'll just give you the presentation itself then. Mayor, council, city staff, and public, thank you for allowing me to join you tonight and provide you an update on our community cleanup event that happened on October 23rd. What I kind of wanted to do was kind of give you a history of where this all began. Oh, great, thank you. That's fantastic. So, we'll get to the history slide, and we're good to go. Okay, there you go. Recology's always partnered with the city for the last several years on the abandoned waste program and illegal dumping, and we've been always trying to work together to figure out how to best accomplish, you know, and remedy that abandoned waste program. So, in 2020, during the pandemic, kind of, we decided what a great way would be to do a fall community cleanup. So, we approached the city of San Bruno and asked if they would be okay with this and if they would partner with us, and they hands down said, absolutely, let's do it, and let's host it in the City Hall parking lot. It was a tremendous success, over 100 cars, and we quickly realized at the end of that event that we had already outgrown that space. So, fast forward to then spring, when we realized that Operation Clean Suite was probably not going to happen, we said, well, the last event was so successful, let's put together another community cleanup. We reached out to the Church of Latter-day Saints and asked if we can use their parking lot, which is very large, and they were absolutely supportive to help our community. So, we hosted our second one in the spring of 2021, and we had about 260 cars. So, we saw that there was a very big demand, any need for these community cleanups, so we decided to have the third one this past October 23rd. The church was more than happy to let us use their parking lot again, and so we hosted our third fall community cleanup on Saturday, October 23rd. Next slide. We held this event from 8:00 a.m. till 11:00 a.m. We had 18 volunteers, which was tremendous, and it included city staff, council, Recology, and actually missionaries from the church actually helped us out. We served 439 cars that day. We went through 11, we filled 11 30-yard debris boxes, and we collected 64,000 pounds of garbage. So, you can see by the pictures, we had quite a line that went up Sneed's and all the way down to maybe the Google Building and Carl's Jr. at times. So, customers were very patient, they were happy when they got through, nobody was angry having to wait, they're just very appreciative of having the event, so it was worth the wait. Next slide. We also collected and took out of people's homes 8,200 pounds of latex paint. We also had a lot of e-waste, 1,634 pounds of e-waste that was collected. Some of these things are the hardest things people have to get rid of, and you don't know how to get rid of something, you possibly just leave it on the street, and then it becomes abandoned waste and makes our city look terrible. Along with those hard to find or hard to recycle items, we collected refrigerators, clean fridges, a couple of ovens, nine dishwashers, and 23 mattresses. So, it was quite the success. Some improvements that we made on this one, as you learn, time after time, you make improvements, we put out some A-frames. I think this was a great improvement. We rotated, we had two of these A-frames that described the event and when it was and where it was, and had a QR code that somebody could scan with their phone. We rotated those two A-frames about every two days for the three weeks leading up to the event. We also had companies, e-recycling and Clean Harbors. We had those companies actually be on-site to handle all the paint and all the electronics. That allowed all the rest of our vendors to help our residents get the stuff out of their cars and into the debris boxes quickly. And it also took out that element of us having to say, I'm sorry, that particular item isn't in the paint program. We, Clean Harbors took care of all of that for us. The biggest addition this year was that we invested and put an insert into the utility bill. And we think this was the huge peak in the amount of participants. We now know where we can reach the residents best in San Bruno, because most of the customers who drove up had the insert in their car. because most of the customers who drove up had the insert in their car, kind of as their voucher to get in. So we really found that that is now a great way to communicate with our residents. Next slide. So I just, in summary, I just want to thank the city of San Bruno for your partnership on this program and how it's, the partnership together and the volunteers from your city staff and from the council has really made this the event what it is. And a huge thank you again to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints for their gracious donation of their parking lot. They're wonderful to work with, and we look forward to the next one. So thanks for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation and the information and the results of that Saturday. We'll go to colleagues for questions. Vice Chair Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the report. It was a tremendous success. I want to tell us to thank the community for coming out and for those that were patient, because the lines were long and it took a lot of time to get everybody processed. So thank you, Kirsten, and to everyone involved. It was, it was a good workout that day, and figuring out how we're going to do the next one, it will take some more effort. So, thank you.
Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank you. I know that this is a community hit, so it's great to see these events that are not just bringing the community together, but that are efficient. And I also wanted to thank Kirsten and Recology, because we haven't seen you since the last one, and we do know that there was a significant amount of help from Recology for the six community cleanup events that were sponsored by the San Bruno Now and the Cleaning and Greening San Bruno Group, and that brought out over 300 residents at such a time when people were stuck at home. And I know Recology came out and picked up loads and loads of garbage throughout those six events. So thank you for this last event, and thank you for those six events before then, just because we hadn't seen you since. So thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Just very quickly, want to echo the comments and the thanks. It was a wonderful event, extremely popular. I think they're just going to get more and more popular as we move forward, so we'll need to plan for continued growth there, I think. And as Councilmember Mason said, I appreciate the partnership between Recology and our city and all of the areas. Thank you.
Yes, and again, thank you, another success I know was embarked upon. As you indicated, another point was to, in lieu of Operation Clean Suite because of COVID, and then you've done a separate one, so one in addition. So we appreciate, again, I know that wasn't, in May, probably wasn't, weren't thinking about two, but we appreciate you're willing, because I know it's a lot of work and effort for the staff. As we depart, you folks are still working into the afternoon, so want to thank you as well. And enjoy the rest of your evening. You know, I just switched over my email, and so I'm going to ask City Hall if they could read the next announcement.
I can read it. Mayor, I have it up. I can read it.
Thank you.
The next announcement is San Mateo County continues to offer COVID-19 vaccines and boosters for eligible individuals. Appointments are preferred and can be made by visiting myturn.ca.gov or by calling 1-833-422-4255. COVID-19 vaccines for kids aged 5 to 11 are now also available. And San Mateo County Health will offer clinics on their county site, as well as additional clinics available on MyTurn, myturn.ca.gov. It is recommended that parents contact their child's primary care physician to learn more or if they have any questions about the pediatric vaccination or eligibility status. And those links that I mentioned can be found on tonight's agenda, if you would like to visit them for more information.
Thank you very much for your assistance, City Clerk. And we're going to move on to item C, receive presentation and annual report from the Parks and Recreation Commission. And we're bringing in, obviously, I see Danielle Brewer from our Parks and Recreation Department, Community Services, excuse me, going back in time. And do we have the chair, or who's, or is Brewer making? Ah, the presenter is listed as our chair, Mike Palmer.
Right, sorry. It's not letting me turn on the camera. There we go, there we go.
Am I in?
Here. Sorry.
Hold on, folks.
Sorry, there you are, making a grand entrance.
There we go, look at that.
Yes, technology, Mr. Chair. The, we'll turn it over to you, sir, for the annual report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Medina and members of the city council. My name is Mike Palmer, and I currently serve as the chairperson for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm here tonight to present the commission's annual report for 2020-2021 and to outline the work plan for 2021-2022.
Takes a second.
Hold on, technical difficulty. This slide shows the brief agenda for topics that I will be presenting tonight. Slide number three, this slide lists the current commission members. With the council's permission, I would like to introduce the commission's two newest members, Commissioner Thomas Kuhn and Student Representative Adams Abridger. Mr. Kuhn resides in San Bruno with his wife and two sons and currently works in commercial and multifamily real estate development. Student Representative Abridger is currently a senior at Cappuccino and, upon graduation, hopes to study physics at MIT. Welcome to both of them. This slide shows the commission's accomplishments for 2021-2020-2021. That won't be the last time I mess that up, by the way, folks. These will be shown and discussed in a little more detail as we scroll through the annual report. The Parks and Recreation Commission continues to provide input for the new Recreation and Aquatic Center in a variety of ways. Commissioners Chris Gonzalez and Mike Palmer continue to serve on the city's advisory committee as representatives of the Parks and Recreation Commission. The pictures that you see on this slide are from a display that was placed in the Rec Center during September of 2020. This display showed samples of different types of interior surface finishes, as well as different recommendations for interior signage. Members of the advisory committee were asked to come by and provide their input on both of these topics. In addition to the advisory committee, Commissioners Jessica Martinucci and Lucy Zamatea continue to serve on a subcommittee in conjunction with the city's Culture and Arts Commission to explore ideas for creating options for art to be located in and around the new Recreation and Aquatic Center. At its June 16th meeting, the commission received a presentation from City Manager Grogan and Don Murcus from Group Four Architects. This is an update on the project, as well as an explanation of the process for awarding the construction bid. This next slide shows a couple of pictures taken at the Tom Lehrer Field Grandstand and Concession Stand rededication. This event included members of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, the San Bruno City Council, several members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, sea staff, several members of the Lehrer family, and the general public. This project included replacement of all of the existing seating, sealing the concrete areas to prevent water intrusion, painting the entire facility, replacing old doors and windows to the rooms located under the bleachers, and updating the concession stand. Part of the funding for this project came from a partnership with the San Bruno Lions Club, which had received a grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. This slide shows the new location of the Unity Sculpture and the Reflections Seating Area. The sculpture had to be relocated because the previous location was in the footprint of the new Recreation and Aquatic Center building. Funding for this project came from the Culture and the Arts Commission. The city continues to benefit from adopt-to-park relationships with several groups. The two pictures on this slide depict some of the work that was done by the Seagulls Baseball Academy through its adopt-to-park partnership with the city at Tom Lehrer Field. Picture on the left shows work being performed in one of the bullpens to replace the two pitchers' mounds. The photo on the right shows the newly rebuilt pitcher's mound on the field and new sod that was installed between the mound and the home plate area. Members of the Park and Recreation Commission continued to visit all of the city's parks during 2020-2021. At the completion of each visit, commissioners complete a park visit form which reflects each commissioner's observations of the park being visited. Once completed, the forms are submitted to the Parks and Recreation Commission chairperson for review. The chairperson then submits each form to the parks manager for review and possible action. This slide shows a wind railing being replaced at Seventh Avenue and Walnut Park. This wooden railing had been noted on several park visit forms. Ah, monthly Zoom meetings. I am sure that most of us would agree that getting used to conducting meetings via Zoom has been an accomplishment. The Parks and Recreation Commission is no exception. This is a screenshot of the commission's May meeting. The commission's meetings have been conducted via Zoom since May of 2020, and I want to thank all the past and present commissioners for their flexibility in being able to adapt the new meeting structure. The new technology was challenging at times, but now that the commission is more comfortable with it, the meetings have been both productive and informative. The city recently installed a new stone memorial at Earl Glenview Park. It was installed on Friday, September 3rd, and the ceremony honoring this new installation took place on Monday, September 13th. The memorial is installed so that it can be viewed while sitting on the stone bench that was constructed as part of the original design of the park and faces towards the Crestmore Canyon area. Thanks to Commissioner Mike Zastro for the pictures and who was present for both the installation and the dedication of the new monument. Excuse me. On November 18th, 2020, the Parks and Recreation Commission awarded its 2020 Community Recognition Award to Greg Pierce. Greg is well-known to many people in San Bruno for his constant presence and community involvement. This page shows a couple of pictures of Mr. Pierce. Greg's accomplishments include serving San Bruno ASO and Lowen Soccer Programs in several different capacities, including board member and coach, current and or past president for both the Rotary and San Bruno Lions Clubs, serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission from 2006 to 2015, and coaching badminton and soccer at both Parkside and Cappuccino. On May 19th, 2021, the Parks and Recreation Commission awarded its 2021 Community Recognition Award to Brian Hafter. Brian is well-known to many folks in San Bruno and even some neighboring cities because of his involvement in the youth soccer programs in our area. This page shows two photos of Mr. Hafter. Brian's accomplishments include coaching many soccer teams for both the Lowen and ASO Soccer Programs in San Bruno, coaching girl soccer teams at Cappuccino High School, and being a volunteer college admissions counselor. Both of the community recognition awards were submitted to the commission by a subcommittee that was formed to review the applications and recommend a recipient. This time, I want to thank the subcommittee comprised of Commissioners Lucy Zamatea, Lori Greenberg, and Dave Nigel for excellent recommendations. This slide details the Parks and Recreation Commission goals for 2021-2022. In addition to the park visits and the ongoing work on the new Recreation and Aquatic Center, the commission has identified the following. To assist with recording and the inventory of all park amenities, continue to assist the city with its Year Three projects for the ADA Transition Plan, the completion of the Lehrer Field Parking Lot Project, the launch of the Friends of Crestmore Canyon Group to help facilitate walking trails in the Crestmore Canyon, and to continue to serve as liaisons to the Recreation and Aquatic Center Advisory Board. Last year during this time, the council allowed me to make an additional comment on an item that was not included in the annual report. I am asking to be able to do that again. This was regarding Commissioner David Nigel and was in honor of his 50th year as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner for the city of San Bruno. This year is my honor to inform the city council and the city of San Bruno that Commissioner Nigel has recently received an additional honor from the California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members. Dave has been a member of that organization since 1970. In 2005, Dave was the initial recipient and is currently the only recipient of the CAPR-CBM Hall of Fame Award for Distinguished Service. Since 1979, Commissioner Nigel has been the state chair of the CAPR-CBM Scholarship Committee. During his tenure, he has not only personally contributed thousands of dollars, but has been a tireless fundraiser and generated more than $45,000 for this scholarship. On October 23rd, 2021, in honor of Commissioner Nigel's important contributions, this organization's annual scholarship, the California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members renamed this scholarship the David Nigel slash CAPR-CBM Scholarship Award. This is truly a special honor and very well-deserved. This will conclude the annual report to city council from the Parks and Recreation Commission for 2020-2021. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have for me this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Ms. Brewer. Questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Salazar.
I just wanted to thank Mike for his years of leadership on the commission and just pass along my thanks to the entire commission. And I miss being part of that group. It was a great, great bunch of people, and the great work continues. So, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Seeing no other hands. Mike, once again, if you please go back and thank the commission for their work, their effort on behalf of myself and as a former commissioner as well, and they were enjoyable. And just for all the work and the effort that's being done from staff, as well as from the commission even during these COVID times. So always a pleasure to see you, and thank you for your time, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers. Have a great evening.
And, thank you. And then, City Clerk, if you would be as kind to continue the announcements.
Yes, the next announcement is, learn about San Bruno's districting process. Past meetings and workshop recordings and materials are posted to districtingsanbruno.org/schedule. The next community workshop is scheduled for Saturday, November 13th, 2021, at 2:00 p.m. and will be held in person at City Hall. Masks are required. For full detail, visit districtingsanbruno.org/schedule, and those links are listed on the agenda.
Thank you, next item.
The next item is declare November 14th through 20th, 2021, as united against hate week in San Bruno.
Thank you. We do have a proclamation this evening, as you know, this is a, this is something that is broad-based through the country. However, also for San Mateo County, it is with thanks to the city manager for the north mayors and managers brought this forward, and it was spearheaded and adopted by those in the county and was done at the Board of Supervisors, and so we are continuing that tradition. I'll just read a couple of the whereas's. Whereas the number of hate crimes across the United States has increased dramatically over the past couple of years, and whereas the city of San Bruno City Council stands strongly in support of our diverse community, honoring and protecting every individual regardless of race, creed, color, gender, religion, ethnic, national orientation, or identity, and whereas education, compassion, and cooperation are the key to unlocking, understanding, and embracing differences between people. And now therefore I, Rico Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, hereby proclaim the week of November the 14th through the 20th, 2021, as united against hate week. So again, and I want to thank the Heart Committee also, and our councilmembers Salazar and Mason, along with the others that have been on it who have been promoting as well as announcing upcoming things that are on the websites, and I appreciate. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I was just going to encourage our council to share with their friends and on the media sites the events that are coming up, because the Heart Committee with council... on the media sites the events that are coming up because the Heart Committee with Councilmember Salazar and a number of other community members have planned different things, but one of the highlights is going to be a reading from Mahogany Brown that's going to be live but available virtually to the library and to all of our schools as well, so hopefully people take advantage of that. But really just asking everybody to share because it's, I think it's really thoughtful, the events that are put together for the week. So, thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, I'll let you proceed.
The City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, has been canceled.
And I appreciate your assistance on the announcements. There are two things I did want to mention that aren't there. One is this Thursday is Veterans Day, and there will be an observance, a ceremony at the Golden Gate Cemetery. That is the first time since 2019 it will be in person, and so I wanted to certainly let that be known. And I just wanted to, just a little fun fact, that Cappuccino had their big Battle the Strip game on Friday, and the Mayor Schneider and I had a wager, as we did at Thursday's Rotary honoring the seniors that were leaving in the cheer as well as the football team. Two things were wagered. One was a tree planted with a plaque on the score and who won, and we're working on that. And the second one was having to wear, I'm wearing my Cappuccino garment that brought us to the party, but at the same time, Mayor Schneider tonight, as she's conducting her meeting in the City of Milbrae, is wearing Cappuccino gear as well as one of the wagers. So I just wanted, and I had her permission to make that known, but she was a good sport and she was there with me and others, and so anyway, f y. Now we'll move on to our consent calendar. All these items have had earlier action by council, may be enacted by one motion, or if there's any self-exception or requests. At this time, what I would like to ask is if there are, and I know there's quite a few items, but if there are items that are being asked to be pulled for a separate motion. Okay, seeing none. Any items for comment or, you know, acknowledging the grants, et cetera. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item G as in George, and item J as in Jack. Comment on it.
B and J. Councilmember Mason?
Just, item H, please, 6H. I just have a question on 6H, and one second. And just a question on 6E.
And I have H and E. So let me start, and if I go out of line or out of order, I apologize. Let's go to E first, and that was receive written update on the city's response approach to COVID-19. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I just wanted to first thank the city manager after one of the last meetings did provide us with the city's procedures around the employees and the response to COVID and processes and such. I was hoping that we could get a percentage of how many employees are vaccinated, and not sure if that needs, if that's already something that needs, I apologize, that needs direction or not, but that's just a request.
City manager?
Understand the question, but don't have the data to respond at this point.
Understood. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item, and I think I see it as G. Adopt resolution authorizing the purchase of seven vehicles with the, with equipment installation and customization in the amount not to exceed 699,865. And that was G, I believe, so that would be Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, Mayor Medina, thank you for that. Just wanted to acknowledge of the vehicles being purchased, we are using, utilizing $205,000 for Measure G funds to purchase a pavement repair truck. That's to assist with the, to improve the pothole repair in our city, and I, it's important to acknowledge that when we're spending our money for Measure G, where it's going. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank staff for, I'm looking forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Item, and I apologize colleagues, if you want to add something, just go ahead and raise your hand if you could. Item H. Adopt resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the city manager to send a letter in response to the San Mateo County Grand Jury Study, San Mateo County, California's Ground Zero for Sea Level Rise. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, just a question around the actual, there's a, there's a comment in here around there being a dedicated funding source, and I believe that the city says that, you know, something that we're going to look into. Should there be a dedicated funding source at some point with this, I just want to confirm it would come back to the council prior to dedicating the source, if that makes sense. I can clarify the question if needed.
City manager?
Through the mayor, Councilwoman Mason, can you clarify the question in what particular item? And I'll also ask the city clerk to bring in our city engineer, Haywon Ritchie, from the attendee pool to the panelist pool.
Councilmember, if you, as they're bringing, Ms. Ritchie, and if you could, I think the manager was asking for a little clarity?
Yeah, so specifically it's page 47 of 204, and it says, "At a public meeting, each city and town council or board of supervisors should take at least one concrete action toward establishing a continued funding source for One Shoreline, identify that action in response to the report, and potentially adopt a resolution expressing support for a parcel tax or property tax by June 30th, 2022." And the response was that, "The City of San Bruno remains committed to mitigating sea level rise and the harmful effects of climate change. The city recognizes that capital improvement projects relating to sea level rise are very expensive, that grant funding is sparse and competitive. This recommendation requires further analysis and study and consultation and coordination with One Shoreline's current efforts. The timeframe for implementation is dependent on ongoing discussions with One Shoreline." So I just wanted to understand where the, where we would be informed of any further discussions or any actions taken one way or the other on this item.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mason. That question and the response is specific to a potential funding measure that the city would not put on, but that would more likely be put on by the county to be a permit funding source for the new One Shoreline Agency. And so should the county decide to do that, the city would benefit from the activities of One Shoreline, and then the city would have a decision, did you want to support that countywide measure? And so we would certainly bring that to the city council for a decision if the city council wanted to state its support or other intentions with regard to that potential county measure to support, countywide measure to support the One Shoreline Agency.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to J. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city management to execute an agreement with the City-County Association of Governments for the award of a transportation fund for a clean air grant in the amount of 246,760, and approving the appropriation of 368,240 from the Measure A Fund. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to acknowledge the continuing effort of our staff in obtaining grants of nearly a quarter of a million dollars here to put in 18.2 miles of, to assist with putting in 18.2 miles of bike lanes in San Bruno. I did submit this question to staff earlier, and these bike lanes are all over our city, and if staff has that map available, that would be great to share real quickly, just because it's so widespread. A little hard to see that, though, but.
So, in response to Vice Mayor Medina's question, what's on the screen is the map, it is the citywide map, and a little difficult to see in this format, but in subsequent slides, there is a list of all of the proposed three bike routes across the city, and so there's this one slide as well as a subsequent slide that provides a little more detail on the per block level for where those locations would be installed. And so, Vice Mayor Medina, if that answered your question, we're sufficient. If not, staff is available to go into additional detail if needed.
No, city manager, that's sufficient. I just wanted to make sure that it's acknowledged and how extensive these, these bike lanes are, because they are desperately in need, and it's such a great feat that we're going to accomplish with, with this grant and with the additional funding. So I just wanted to express my appreciation. Thank you.
Okay, I think that takes care of all the items that were requested by council. With that said, is there any action from council on the consent?
I will make a motion to accept the items on the consent calendar.
Appreciate that.
I'll second.
Thank you. Everybody's a little shy tonight. Motion seconded, Hamilton Salazar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina? Motion carried.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to conductive business. City clerk?
Item 7A. Adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with R3 Consulting Group to conduct a detailed performance and rate review and support negotiations with Recology San Bruno.
And we will turn over this to our city manager?
Sure. This presentation will be provided by our Finance Director, Chin Yoo Sun, and we have amended the presentation slightly based on our discussions at the prior study session, just to give clarification from council, and I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Chin Yoo Sun.
Thank you, Javon. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Chin Yoo Sun, Finance Director, I will be presenting for the Integrated Waste Management Contract Consulting. And the objective is to adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with R3 Consulting Group, Inc., and not exceed 130,000 to conduct a detailed performance and rate review study and support the city's negotiation process with Recology San Bruno. Our agenda including some background and options for future services, human effort for this consulting contract, and the consultant's proposal summary, and then staff recommendation. Background is something we actually talked about in the study session earlier today. So we have a franchise agreement currently between the city and Recology San Bruno, and this, this franchise agreement is lasting about 27 years from July 1998 to June 2024. And in 2022, the city will need to negotiate adjustments to and analyze the franchise agreement for waste services and for quite a few reasons. Reasons are, the detailed rate review is due for this period 2023. We will need to address implication and potential costs of compliance with the Senate Dome 1383. We need to outline terms and conditions for continuation of the city recology abandoned waste program, which we are in current, in pilot stage, the pilot expires by December 31st, 2021. You know, council has also requested contract performance reviews, and then we need a timeline to, to request a, to issue an RFP, it's about, this timeline needs about two years. If this process is still active, we recommend an RFP process later than July 7th, 2nd. And we also mentioned earlier that the Integrated Waste Management Service contract is quite significant investment, capital and manpower, it is best, that's always better for the city to start than renegotiation of procurement processes early. So earlier in this study session, members of council has requested a performance review for Section 5, up to seven years, so we wanted to get some clarification for, from council regarding Section 5. Section 5 is very broad, including billing and reporting. Some of the records in Section 5 doesn't really cover as far back as seven years. So we want to narrow down the position and confirm if the Section 5 mentioned by council is actually mentioned, is actually referring to Section 5.9, that's Recycling Education and Community Outreach. So we need some clarification on that, in that aspect. And any change to that could contribute to some additional change in the contract cost where, for the council we're talking about. We can, we can get a council confirmation later. I'll just carry on with the presentation. The options for future services, we talked about earlier, two options. One is initiated contract negotiation with Recology San Bruno for a new franchise agreement, which will include SB 1383 compliance, continuation of abandoned waste program, and other services to be determined, and three-year performance review for the contract, and then up to seven years real for certain items in Section 9, Section 5.9 of Section 5, and as defined by the council member. And they also, another option is initiate a, an amendment negotiation with Recology San Bruno in regards to the current management, franchise agreement, which ends on June 30, 2024. The amendment negotiation will include detailed rate review, SB 1383, and continuation of abandoned waste program, and will do a three-year performance review and also Section 5 review as defined by the council. You know, we want to remind councilmembers that option, option one does not preclude the city to pursue the RFP, it only gives the city an additional option to check out what the renegotiation with Recology San Bruno will come out to be before the city decides whether the city wants to go through RFP process or not. The RFP process option is always on the table, whether you go through option one, option I want to, you know, provide some information on procurement effort. Utility service consulting is a niche field, but we have a, very few ones specialized in this field are readily available at this time, especially when SB 1383 is out, and then many cities and entities like us are looking for consultants to help them to meet their requirements set by the state. And R3 is an independent consultant serving public agencies and not waste haulers, and Javon had talked about this earlier in the study session. We have a history working with R3, they assisted the city in the review of Recology's application for detailed rate increase for fiscal year 1920, and then achieved about a 1% saving for the city. Our R3 proposal for the current consulting contract includes many tasks, and they are categorized in three categories. Performance review will cost about 60,000, detailed rate review about 40,000, and renegotiation with Recology about 30,000. All in all, they're going to, the current All in all, they're going to, the current proposal totals about 130,000. Of course, we need to counsel the clarification on a Section 5 review that could lead to some change to this number. And also, we want to provide additional information. If the city decides to pursue competitive procurement, meaning going out with RFP, the estimated cost for that scope of work will be additional 150,000. At that time, we'll come back to the council for contract management if we pursue a competitive agreement, for competitive procurement down the road. So staff recommendations, this is the same as we recommended in the study session. We recommend for council to adopt option number 3 for procurement, we need initiated contract renegotiation with Recology for a new franchise agreement. And we also address SB 1383 and continuation of abandoned waste program, and add a service and also performance review after three years and a seven-year review in certain items in Section 5. This, we also recommend council adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with R3 Consulting Group, now to exceed 130,000 to conduct a detailed performance and rate review study and support the city's negotiation effort. And my presentation will come. Any questions from the council?
Thank you very much for the report and presentation. Questions from colleagues? Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I think just for members of the public who may be watching, because council also had questions about this earlier, I think it's important to note that we did have a special meeting tonight from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., where the council has already directed staff to look into Option 1, to negotiate a new contract with the option to issue an RFP, depending on what the terms are of that new contract and obviously as legally allowed. So right now, we're just focusing on the approval of the contract for the consultant. And so I just wanted to answer the question that was posed because the question earlier around Section 5 of the contract. So specifically, the council did ask that they look into seven years, seven years look back on Section 5. And I know for me, I can't speak for the whole council, but 5.9.3.2, around 5.9.3.3, which is the, generally, it's called general. And then there's a section on youth education. But also in Section 5, there is a section around customer logs that the city has a right to over the course of a couple of years, and I think that would help to determine performance. 5.9.1 requires Recology to hire a recycling coordinator, of which 50% of their time is to be allowed to the city, and has this been utilized? Section 5.9.2 has city and the recology applying for grants together. And Section 5.9.3, we've already talked about, and that's the cash for class. So those are the areas that I'm, I know for me, I'm most interested in, and hopefully there's a consensus on the council for those particular sections. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina?
These buttons are a little hard to push sometimes. I apologize for the delay. I wanted to provide a little background with that 1% and what that meant when we had R3 work with us last time. I'm looking at the Daily Journal news paper article here, and that one, the percent savings was 175,000 by having them perform the audit. Having someone, having a consultant with that expertise is crucial. We don't have anybody on staff to do that. If we can go back to the breakdown on the cost on the slide, please? For the, if someone can just give a little more detail on the performance review. I understand the detailed rate review, that's what we had done previously. I understand renegotiation with Recology. But if, just a little more detail on what the performance review would include, that would be great.
I think if Garth Schultz, he's online, I think it would be nice for him to talk about the performance review in his proposal. We can have that given.
Yes, happy to do so. Once again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Garth Schultz with R3 Consulting Group, thank you for consideration of this item. So the performance review in summary is to look at the various terms and conditions and performance standards that Recology's obligated to meet under the agreement, and an assessment of their compliance with or nonconformance with each of those various terms and conditions. And so I'll give you kind of an overview of what we put in our scope of work. It's pretty extensive. So one is it's looking at the various term and conditions that I just noted, that's looking at, sorry, hold on a minute, management and administration, confirming their organizational chart, staffing practices, personnel management practices, safety records, reviewing their collection operations, that's literally field audits, following along lawn trucks, making sure that they're meeting standards with respect to pickups, collections, missed services, making sure that the containers that are being serviced out there are in good condition, replaced to the right proper location, upright and let's close, as an example, confirming that the rate records, so the records that are maintained both by the city through its utility billing system, but then more importantly, tracking that what folks are paying for their services actually receiving in the field, which is the operational practice, making sure that folks are essentially getting what they're paying for, looking at vehicle and equipment maintenance, repair and replacement records, assessing their customer service records and complaint records, council member Mason noted, looking at their payment of franchise fees, scrolling through, I think that's kind of it at a fairly high level. But to bring it back to a close, management administration, customer service, billing, franchise fee payments, field operations and conditions in the field, customer service complaints, and of course, those sections in Section 5.9 that were raised this evening.
And to the mayor, Javon Robyn, City Manager, to piggyback off that, I think it's important to note that that performance review is for the entire contract, and that will be for three years. And so the scope of work that Garth just reviewed is page 2 of their proposal, and it's on page 174 of 204 pages in the packet. And so that, the detailed scope of work that he just reviewed there. And so that will be for the three years, beginning 18, 19. And then the seven-year review would be on Section 5 and the subsection of Section 5 that council defines. And so the prior slide we had was highlighting Section 5.9. If council desires the seven-year review to be on all of five or additional sections of Section 5 outside of 5.9, I think it's important to let us know, and then we'll adjust accordingly.
Vice Mayor, any other questions or?
No, that was it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from colleagues? Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, just one more. I guess the amount of money, it's kind of alarming, but when we look at the entire picture of how much it costs to reprocure, it sounds like this is, we would pay this anyway. And if we were to reprocure and make that decision later, then it would be 300,000. So we're actually spending less than half the cost to look at our options. And then this is a potential for reprocurement later. So we would have to pay this cost anyways, is really what I'm asking.
Yes, a portion of the cost would have to be paid for regardless, and the cost of reprocuring and the cost of the full RFP process is that additional 150. But the detailed rate analysis and components of the performance review, so we can put together all that comprehensive data that Mr. Schultz talked about in the prior meeting, would absolutely be necessary if we went out to an RFP process.
Okay, so I just, like, this can be seen almost as a savings of, if at some point we don't reprocure, we would be saving about $150,000 potentially by taking my, okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. And then just, just because this came up earlier, we also requested that should the review result in a finding that Recology had not performed, that we also look into the remedy for that? And then if there should be a new agreement, what would that look like moving forward as far as what we would be providing to the schools, since the recycling program is apparently now outdated? So just an information for the public who may be watching and what weren't on the earlier meeting. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open it to the public. We do have someone who wishes to speak, and if anybody else wishes to speak on this topic, please raise your hand at this time. And we'll ask the City Clerk if you could bring the speakers in.
Yes, the first speaker is Paul Wapinski.
Good evening. I'm not really familiar with this item, but when I read it, I just got a couple of items I wanted to ask about. First off, is this just to see if we want to retain Recology? And is there any competition for their contract? Or is this just we're talking about negotiating with them by themselves? And also, there's no discussion of rates. Would that be negotiated after they, if you decided to keep them, that would be no discussion for that? And then in the packet on item 3, there was a item that says, what would be, or my question, I guess, would be, what would constitute an unsuccessful negotiation with them, triggering the $150,000 to be spent for a new request for proposal? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing any other persons at this time. So with that, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to council, and ask the city manager or staff if they could, because obviously not everybody was at the 5 o'clock, they could summarize maybe some of the questions that we just heard. Please.
To the mayor, absolutely. But you know, I want to ask Garth Schultz to come on and address those questions. I know we talked about them in detail at the 5 o'clock. But Mr. Schultz, will you talk a little bit about the data and the recommendation to one attempt of the renegotiation process and what's seen in the marketplace for an RFP process and the benefit that we have in timing and that this process doesn't exclude the RFP process?
Yes, yes. Ultimately, in summary, the schedule that was presented to the council in the 5 p.m. study session essentially allows for approximately a six-month window during which you can seek to renegotiate with Recology for the terms and conditions of importance to the council, such as the abandoned waste program, key terms and conditions to support the city's efforts and compliance with SB 1383, and also to effectuate a longer-term agreement. Now, with respect to, you know, whether those outcomes are deemed successful or not is dependent on one of two outcomes. One is that, you know, between R3 and the city staff and Recology, we may at some point during the renegotiation process come to an impasse, at which point we would come back to the council and say negotiations have not been successful and are not fruitful. I apologize for my cat in the background. Secondly, we may have a negotiated outcome that, you know, can be presented to the council, and then it will be up to the council to determine whether it wants to accept that renegotiation effort. In either of those cases, you still preserve essentially a two-year timeframe during which if you decide either that negotiations aren't meeting your expectations, or negotiations just fail outright, you can still proceed with an RFP process. I believe that covers the questions. Oh, and then council member Mason, with respect to your questions around any deficiencies that are identified during the operations review process, yes, our common practice is to recommend, you know, what the remedy for those deficiencies may be, if remedy exists. And certainly knowing that the council and that we would be supposedly, hopefully engaged to support you in renegotiation efforts, also point towards what are the new best practices in the industry around areas such as school education, but other areas of deficiency that may be identified during the process.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Okay, this is an action item, and it is a resolution. Is there any action from council?
I will make a motion that we agree with the resolution.
Second?
Motion by Salazar, seconded by Vice Mayor Marty Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B, City Clerk on conduct.
Item 7B, consider recommendation from the San Bruno Community Foundation Board Nomination Ad Hoc Committee and adopt resolution approving appointments to the San Bruno Community Foundation Board of Directors. I am bringing into the room, let me start my video, actually. Wrong video. Hello, Mayor and council, I am bringing over Leslie Hadamia. She is the San Bruno Community Foundation Director. She will be kind of co-presenting this with me. I'm going to present it to you directly. This is, let me pull up my presentation here. For some reason, my PowerPoint is not working. Sorry about that. Technical difficulties are fine. So yes, we held a number of interviews and meetings with the San Bruno Community Foundation Board Nomination Ad Hoc Committee. That's a tongue twister. And this is because we have vacancies that are to occur. Can you see my screen? I should verify that first. And, okay, I was having so many problems, it wasn't working. Okay. This is for the San Bruno Community Foundation Board Nomination Ad Hoc Committee Appointment Recommendations. The members of the Ad Hoc Committee consisted of two council members, Councilmember Tom Hamilton, who was the chair of the committee, and Councilmember Michael Salazar, as well as two members of the San Bruno Community Foundation. We had President Emma Roberts, and then Member Melissa Natane Jones. And Leslie Hadamia was the driving force behind this, and I assisted with the recruitment efforts and gathering applications from the public. The agenda for this presentation is to review the Ad Hoc Committee meeting schedule, the list of interviewed applicants, the key criteria for the applicants, and then the recommended applicants for your consideration this evening, as well as any questions that you may have. So the first slide here shows the schedule of the meetings that were held by the Ad Hoc Committee and those members. The first was on August 11, 2021, where the committee reviewed draft recruitment brochure and applications. They agreed to the timeline, and I should also note that is where Councilmember Hamilton was chosen as chair for the committee. And then on September 20, the applications that had been received were reviewed by the committee members. It was determined at that time to go ahead and interview all of the applicants, because all of the applicants met the criteria. And the committee also agreed to the evaluation process and the criteria for that process. And they discussed the interview questions that would be asked of the applicants. And the first interview session occurred on September 27, 2021, where four applicants were interviewed by the committee. The second round was on October 4, 2021, where six applicants were interviewed. And then on October 13, 2021, one applicant was interviewed. And then the committee, after that interview concluded, the committee discussed the applicants and the interviews that were held, and they agreed upon the recommended slate of applicants and the recommended alternates. There was two alternates chosen, however, since the time of reaching out to that applicant to let them know that they were chosen as an alternate, they did withdraw. So we now have one alternate for your consideration. So we now have one alternate for your consideration this evening. And, um, I should say that the reason why you may wonder why the interview sessions were split into three sessions, it was also based on the availability of the applicants. So we were, we were considerate of the time that the applicants had, as well as the members. Okay. The list of interviewed applicants are here in alphabetical order. We will start with Steve Dissohorst, Brian Hafter, Pat Lynn, Stephen Marshall, Melissa Moreno, Supria Perry, Sean Quinn, Gus Sinks, Myrtle Smith, Stacy Stevenson, and Irving Torres. Each of these applicants were interviewed by the committee on the various days of the meeting. And I won't read all of these bullets for you, but these were the criteria that the committee was looking for in the applicants to consider for appointment. There was a specific need for the skill sets, as you can see here, finance and investment management, public relations, communications experience. The list goes on. We were, they were really trying to also focus, this is a nonprofit board, and so they're keeping that in mind, too. And the committee also considered the assets of the three continuing board members that are staying on currently, which is Raul Gomez, Melissa Natane Jones, Jim Bruin. And then, um, there will be sadly four board members that are, um, that are leaving us this year, Nancy Kraus, John McLaughlin, Emily Roberts, and Treasurer Tim Ross, and we did want to thank them for their service here. They've done a great job. And the key criteria continued was for the goal for the committee, which was to identify the slate of four applicants that complement each other and the continuing board members so that the board as a whole has a mix of skill sets, experience, qualities, and perspectives, and a group of individuals who will work collegially and effectively with each other. Therefore, the recommended applicants for your consideration tonight and the one alternate is applicants Pat Lynn, Melissa Moreno, I can't even say my own name, Melissa Moreno, Supria Perry, and Irving Torres. And the alternate is Steve Dissohorst. The second alternate that was considered was Brian Hafter, however, he has since withdrawn from consideration. So the alternate is Steve Dissohorst. And with that, are there any questions? Leslie and I are here, we are happy to help. We all, I should also note that we have, of course, council member Hamilton and Salazar here, as well as Chair or President Emily Roberts and Melissa Natane Jones.
Thank you for the presentation. Oh, that was quick. I was gonna say, um, why, if there's anybody from the public who also wants to speak on this, you, you can go ahead and raise your hand at this time, but we already have council member Hamilton. I was gonna say, maybe, Leslie Hadamia, is there, was there anything you wish to add? Or we start asking for questions?
No, Melissa covered everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so questions, maybe do we want to hear from our subcommittee? Would that be appropriate this time? And then if there's any hands that come up, we'll do that. Councilmember Hamilton, thank you.
So I just wanted to say a few comments, and I want to reserve the rest of my comments till after, till after public comment. So, um, uh, you know, this, this, as you can saw from the, the timeline, this, this process was, uh, long and complex. The team that, that was, was put together on this ad hoc committee worked extremely well together. We were, we were given very specific instructions on what, what to do, and we delivered on those. I think we did a, a, quite a good job, and I was honored to serve with the other members of this, of this committee. I wanted to acknowledge everyone's hard work and diligence in, in going through a process that was fair and equitable and transparent and going into the, the goals that we were given on the, when, when the subcommittee was formed. So I just wanted to start by saying that. Thank you. I'm gonna have other comments after, um, after public comment.
Any other comments? It's, uh, councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Senator Mayor. I, I would concur with what council member Hamilton just said. It was, um, it was a great experience working with, with this subcommittee. It, there was a lot of time spent in developing criteria and discussing what, um, what we would be achieving as our end goal, and, um, having the opportunity to, um, to work with them was definitely enriching. I, I wanted to, to thank the members of the foundation that dedicated all of their time. And I want to say especially Emily Roberts, she's on her way out after serving two full terms and one of the founding members of the, of the foundation. So definitely appreciated her insight and input into what we did on this subcommittee. And also wanted to thank Leslie Hadamia for her participation. She was there for the full process and helping us work through and facilitating the, the interviews and our internal discussions. So definitely a very, um, very good process and enjoyed being part of that, serving with this group.
Okay, thank you. Is there, I'm gonna ask again if there's anybody, members from the public that want to speak. This is the opportunity in which to raise your hand. Once we bring it back to the council, we're, we're gonna keep it at the council and close any public input at that point. Seeing no hands?
Um, just respectfully, would you like us to speak?
Oh, I'm, yes.
As the public or as?
I, I'm gonna have you, both of you have the opportunity if you wish, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And plus, you're, you're here with us, so I certainly want to give you that option. Once again, um, okay, we have one person from the public. We'll bring in the one person, and please, city clerk, and then we'll bring it to council. And others?
Vomsey Polagumi. I apologize if I got that wrong.
Perfect, no, great job. So my name is Vomsey Polagumi, and following the process along, and just really wanted to give a shout out to this entire process. It seems to be very fair and equitable and super transparent, and I appreciate all the hard work that folks have really put into this, all the time and hours and, you know, efforts really put into this to, to make sure this process is really fair and inclusive and transparent. So thank you so much, and I'm really looking forward to the, to the new members on this, on this board. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other, uh, members wishing to speak, I certainly do with our two community foundation board members who are also on the ad hoc committee, and as was indicated, as council member Hamilton said, work very well together on this long and complex process. Like to hear from either of you if you wish to have any comments. Please, not that you have to, if you wish to.
Leslie, would you like to go?
Sure, I'll go ahead and go first.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, San Bruno City Council. My name is Melissa Natane Jones. I've been a resident in the city of San Bruno for over 40 years, and I've had the distinct pleasure of serving on the San Bruno Community Foundation Board of Directors, where I've been in appointment since 2019. I have served on the SBCF Board Nomination Ad-Hoc Committee, which council member Tom Hamilton chaired, and I wanted to come before you to express my whole heart support for the candidate recommendations that the committee has brought forth for the appointment to the SBCF Board Directors in 2022. I would like to ensure you, as well as the community, the process that the ad hoc committee participated in was not just done to the letter of the bylaws, but also in the spirit and intention in which they were created. As four of our dear board members prepare to step down from the board, the responsibility that I took in this process, I took very seriously. As steward of the funding awarded to the city as a result of the tragic pipeline explosion, neither I nor my fellow board members take our roles for granted. The board nomination process was fair and equitable, and as an executive director of a nonprofit in 15 years in this sector, I know how crucial it is that these types of processes ensure care to reflect the city and the foundation's priority of inclusion and representation. With council member Hamilton, council member Salazar, President Emily Roberts, and myself, I assure you that that's what took place. This thoughtful and collaborative approach was done with integrity, countless hours of due diligence, a scoring rubric, a competency rubric, a debrief process, and a decision. We also considered skill sets highlighting the need for treasurer, their experience, diversity, passion, and even gauged how this board appointment would be prioritized. The candidates were selected with our collective judgment and our expertise. And although there were many exceptional candidates, we collectively agreed that the four being recommended met the criteria to join a highly functional and passionate SBCF Board of Directors. In order for the foundation to continue to do its work and service in the community, this appointment is important. And I hope that you have considered our notes, as well as our process and your decision, and how a potential delay could impact the board and staff who are required to safeguard the foundation's mission. I want to also thank my fellow ad hoc committee members. It was a pleasure to serve with both council members as well as Emily, and that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Now, well, the president of the board.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, and good evening, mayor and members of the city council. As has been mentioned, my name is Emily Roberts, and I'm the current San Bruno Community Foundation President, also a founding board member, completing my eighth year on this board, also member of the SBCF Board Nomination Ad-Hoc Committee, the body that was charged with the facilitation of the nomination and the recommendations that you see before you tonight. And as has been noted, the committee was created at the direction of city council, and I believe I speak for all of us in that we took this charge very seriously, presumably with the acknowledgement that the best structure for vetting potential applicants for foundation board positions should include meaningful participation from both council members and foundation board members who have held the responsibility of financial stewardship and provided strategic direction and oversight to all foundation decisions since the board's inception as members of this unique nonprofit board. I want to begin also by thanking, uh, my fellow committee, uh, committee members, um, and by speaking to the integrity, the collaboration, and thoughtfulness that went into this process. The experience of working on this commit, committee has been nothing but positive, and I deeply appreciate the leadership of Chair Hamilton and contributions of council member Salazar, as well as my colleague on the foundation board, Melissa Natane Jones. The discourse was respectful, the applicants were assessed on mutually established criteria, and perhaps above all else, the members of this committee seem to hold as our North Star the goal of focusing on the best slate of applicants for the work of the foundation and the community that we serve at this time. We were fortunate to have a strong slate of applicants, and although there were many strengths noted among those applicants, I think it speaks volumes that the strength committee unanimously recommended the slate of four applicants that you're considering for you tonight. That said, I'm hopeful that you will support the recommendation before you without delay. And given the implications, you know, I wholeheartedly stand with the committee charged to carry out the process in supporting the approval of the nominations before you, and in doing so honoring the integrity of the process, the equitable and meaningful contributions from both council and foundation representatives, and the significant time and effort of all of those who have participated. And again, thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you both for serving on the ad hoc committee, and thank you also for serving on the San Bruno Community Foundation. And President Roberts, thank you for your years of service to that. Your devotion and passion and, and dedication are, are well noted and appreciated. With that, since we have everybody here, is there any questions that would like to be asked of any of the ad hoc members or on the presentation that was given by the city clerk, since we have everybody in, in here at this time? Okay, seeing none, then, um, at this time, we'll bring it to council, just to the council as far as comments or, and our action or comments?
Um, yes, um, first of all, thank you all for your, for your service on, on the foundation board, and also for everyone involved with the recruitment and, and interviewing process. With that said, um, I wanted to make sure this is absolutely clear. I'm not, well, last night, we had a, a, a meeting on council policies and procedures, and we did spend a, a, a good amount of time discussing, um, the process of adding foundation members to the San Bruno Community Foundation. And there was this thing on how the, um, how we're moving forward with this, and, and my primary part of it, and I want to make sure I'm absolutely clear with everyone here, that there is no questioning of the integrity, the fairness of the process, or the hours and care and concern that was, um, given in getting to us to this point. When the council discussed this policy of, of appointing new members, um, one of the things that was stated there was that the council would have the right to interview the applicants. Somehow or another, um, we are here now with a list, a slate, and I'm not comfortable with proceeding without allowing those council members, myself, to be involved in the interview process. The foundation, as you know, has a very high role in our community, and the importance of that, um, deserves a full council to do our job as electeds in our city to oversee the appointment of the foundation members. This is something that is done for every commission, committee, board in our city. So, oh, we, we talked about this a lot last night, and, and, and the main point would be the council deserves and did not relinquish its right to interview the applicants. So I'll pause now to allow other council members to, to have their, their say, and we can go from there. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Um, councillor Mason, thank you.
Yeah, so I just want to start by thanking the committee for providing the recommendations to the council tonight. It's clear that all applicants were qualified, which I'm really thrilled to see and to read through. When reviewing the process that came about to the city council, it was my belief that all five council members would, should interview all of the applicants since the city council is charged with the appointment and the approval of the annual budget of the foundation. This was, uh, this was not the unanimous vote clearly, and there was a consensus vote that moved forward that resulted in the, um, the two and two committee that recommended the individuals that we have before us in the staff report. Upon establishing the process that moved forward by consensus, the council was also reassured that we would all have the opportunity to interview all of the applicants. So my interpretation of this was that it would be similar to interviews in which an interview panel is established, you have an initial interview, and then when the appointment board or the hiring body, um, then has the opportunity- board or the hiring body then has the opportunity to have a second round of interviews with those applicants. This is the first time that this process is used, and it's also the only process that is run this way out of all of the numerous commissions, committees that I've been involved in since I've been in the council. It's also the only appointments that will decide how thirty to forty million dollars will be spent in the coming years, and the four appointments equal half of the body. So after an almost two-year hiatus of in-person meetings, all of these interviews were held in person. They were held at various hours throughout the day, understandably, because you had to figure out when people could make it. They were not recorded, and they were not available to watch virtually, making it so that I was unable to participate. The council members that were not a committee were not asked for input on the questions, and none of the questions that I had reviewed, which I believe were the only questions asked because there was a standardized process, including Listening Session 1.0 or Listening Session 2.0, which was essentially such an important part of what the community foundations' work is around, which are the community's request for whichever items they prioritize the thirty to forty million dollars to be used towards. And I think that considering the amount of money, considering that the community foundation is really at a fork in the road, where when I was asked for questions by a consultant during the listening survey, it was really, the questions that were asked to me were, what does the future of the foundation look like? We're currently reassessing what that looks like. Is the foundation going to be going out for money? Is the foundation going to, you know, use the money that is spent? And then that may be the end of the foundation. But really, the idea of what will happen to the foundation moving forward, which from my understanding of reading the report, is that there was a community support around the foundation moving forward and growing and going out for funds. None of those questions appeared to be in-depth or really to have a basic understanding, I think, of what, from what I read, of what the applicants believed the future of the foundation should be. So I think, provided that the funds that we're talking about here are so great, the impacts are so great, it's fifty percent of the votes that we're talking about, provided that the process that was established was established with the idea that there would be the opportunity for us to interview all the applicants, and provided that these positions could be up to eight years, I don't believe that a short delay would be truly impactful to the long-term goals of the foundation. And so for these reasons, I respect the decisions. This is not meant to be a criticism on anybody, and I think everybody who was involved in the process, but given the substantial stakes that are involved, I would like the opportunity to interview the applicants as well, as we were reassured would be part of the process if requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in hearing the comments from my colleagues, and I believe very similar to what we discussed last night, I mean, the reason this item is on our agenda tonight is because the full council does have the opportunity to vote on who the new members of the organization will be. Even though the two-by-two process that was selected was not unanimous, it was decided by a majority of the council that that would be the process going forward. The agreement was unfortunately very ill-defined in terms of what the council's ultimate action would be, and it said that it could include interviews, it could include a lot of different things, but it didn't define that interviews were guaranteed to the council. And at least two council members, the members of the subcommittee, were under the impression that recommending a slate of appointees was appropriate, and the rest of the committee was functioning under the same understanding of what the role would be and what the outcome should be. And, you know, as we heard from all the members of the subcommittee, we all felt that it was a thorough, open, honest, and fair process that we went through, and I wholeheartedly support the slate of applicants that were presented. I understand and respect the viewpoints of my two colleagues that just spoke, but at the same time, I'm confident that even if you were to go through the entire process again, that Councilmember Hamilton and I went through, the results would be the same. And to delay this process, only to repeat what's already been done, wouldn't serve the city well, it wouldn't serve the board well. And although our city manager made the comment last night that, you know, delaying this until next year is not a problem, I disagree. I disagree. Half of the board is terming out, and we do need to see people efficiently and quickly, and allow them to go through their process of selecting officers, which again, we also have the authority to override. So, you know, we're not giving up, none of us on this body are giving up any of our rights. And, you know, I would, you know, humbly ask that the full council support the slate that we're bringing forward to you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So one quick clarification on Councilmember Salazar's comment, it's over half of the existing board is terming out. So with those four out, and if we have not replaced them, the foundation board will not even be able to meet because they will not have a floor. This is a really tough place that we've ended up in, and I think Councilmember Salazar's ended up pretty well, that it was, you know, we tried a new process that was ill-defined here at the end. And thinking logically about if the, if the end, if the step at this point, after the subcommittee did its work, was that the full council would interview every applicant, then why did the subcommittee need it all? It doesn't make any sense. What would the point of having the subcommittee in the first place have been? So clearly, the process that we put, that we agreed to, I will absolutely not support doing this again in two years when it's time to appoint additional members. We're going to need to come up with something better. The, whatever we do come up with, I am steadfast in my position that it needs, I'm fully supportive of when we do this again, of having all council members participate in all interviews. But there needs to be representation from the existing board as well in those interviews. I mentioned this last night, but I'll mention it again here for the benefit of the public who were not on the meeting last night. During the interviews, which were very interesting and very rich, and very, we got wonderful questions from the applicants. We, you know, I overused the term, we have had an embarrassment of riches in the people that we interviewed. I mean, we couldn't even, there wasn't even an opportunity to put anybody to the side, even just looking at the applications. But a lot of the questions that we got, questions that neither Councilmember Salazar nor I could answer, and neither could the mayor or the other council members either, because they were very specific questions about the day-to-day operation of the board. But we had President Roberts and Member Natale Jones there, who were able to jump right in and answer those questions and provide that direction, and it was incredibly valuable. Going back to Councilmember Mason's comments, while it is true there wasn't any specific questions about the community surveys, there were at least two questions that addressed, what do you see the direction of this foundation? And what I found, and I mentioned it this last night, so apologies for the repeat, but it's important for everyone here, a majority of the applicants questioned why the foundation doesn't do its own fundraising, and was interested in exploring that, in having it not just spend the money till it's all gone and that's it, but how to make the foundation a long-term self-sustaining thing. So they were thinking about the future and the direction that it's going. So going back, stopping at this point and having the five of us be interviewed all eleven applicants, whether you believe or not, whether you're willing to say it or not, it takes all the effort that we've done and puts it to the side. And while I am fully supportive of revisiting this process and coming up with a better one, tonight I am not supportive of delaying and re-interviewing all the members. And I encourage my colleagues to accept the nominations that are brought forth from the subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Were there any other remarks from colleagues this time? Okay, I'll go ahead and, if it's all right, call on myself to say some things. So I want to address, I want to, first, I respect and appreciate all my colleague comments, and I also know that all of us are appreciative of the four ad hoc members and the work, and I said this last night, the work and the dedication and the seriousness in which they took their task. Some things, you know, when we're talking about the Listening Campaign of 1.0, that to me was when it came to an initial fifty million of the settlement money, and what did the community wish to see going forward? And that was clearly defined, remediation, action by council by four to one, and we are where we're at today. So to me, that's different, but now we're in 2.0. So to go back to that, I think it is, we're going in history, we're not looking forward, is my opinion. Interviews, interviews are not recorded. We've never, to my knowledge, in my tenure, prior to that, recorded interviews. I think it's also just a courtesy and respect to those folks that are being interviewed as well, but at the same time, it was open to the public. So up to ten people were permitted to come into City Hall and to be, to listen to the process. It's also mentioned about officers. This is the only committee commissioner board that the council approves the recommendation of officers. On how the money's going to be spent, the board comes up with recommendations. The City Council approves it, so it's still here. Not only do we review the budget, not only do we approve the officers, not only do we appoint the members, we do all of that here at this level. I can appreciate everybody wanting to ask a certain question or be part of it, but as was indicated, a majority of consensus had laid out a process not clearly maybe defined in intricacy, but I think in the staff report it gives the options and alternates, and those are listed, as was indicated by others. I believe that you have four members that are departing. The bylaws are clear that on January 1, they should be seated. They will be off, and if we only have three members, they cannot meet. I also disagree with the statement that we can just wait on a treasurer, we can wait on members into 2022. You know, this is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). There are regulations and stipulations from the state of California that we need to adhere to. We also want to make sure that they get onboarded and up to speed, so they're not thrown into a role that is important and has had success and since been established. I will say, I was one who said, you know what, we ought to have council liaisons on that. Now, it was a three to two, I lost the vote, but you know what? I move forward and accept the outcome, and have come to realize, if I could go back in time, I would have gone the other way. Because I think it has been very independent, I think it has been given that credibility from organizations willing to give money and have that 501(c)(3) available that has really helped this community in many ways, and the school district, and et cetera, and the grants, and the scholarships. So for me, for the work that's been done, and to go back to these folks who are just trying to volunteer their time and say, you know, what was done, we're going to take that off the table, and we're going to start from scratch again. I don't think that that's the right thing to do at this time to those that simply want to give to the community. And if we have four persons, two from each ad hoc committees, that are bringing a unified, collective, collaborative slate together, then I trust them. And I will, in my mind, I want to move forward. Any final comments from council?
To the mayor.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I have a question for either our city attorney or our city manager. Regarding the option, I'm looking at the email stating that the City Council may choose to conduct interviews for all candidates, a subset of candidates are appointed, simply based on a review of applications and the Step One panel's recommendations. Where does that sit legally?
Mr. City Attorney.
Sure, if I may, to the mayor. I think it's been acknowledged that the City Council can decide who they want to interview or whether they want to interview one, some, or all of the candidates. So I think that's the answer.
Right. I'm sorry, go ahead. If I did this wrong with that, and that was, that was the process that the council was provided in moving forward. That was an option. Correct?
Sure, let me respond to that, Javon Drogen, City Manager. Vice Mayor Medina, in response to your question, I think you were referring to the email that was sent to the City Council in March, I think, March of 18th, when, in preparation for the study session, and that document was discussed in detail at the study session, and the City Council, I believe in a four-to-one vote, elected for the process. And the process included the subcommittee, two members of the City Council, two members of the foundation board, to undertake a process to, as it says in there, recommend candidates. It also provided for, and was expressly articulated by the City Council, that once those recommendations came to the City Council, the City Council wanted to preserve their right to interview all candidates and more or less run their normal appointment process, but they wanted to allow the subcommittee the ability to do the first round of interviews and provide recommendations. And so... And so that was the process that was adopted, that was the process that was followed, that is the process that is before you tonight, in that you have the recommendations from the subcommittee, and the city council as a body can decide to accept those recommendations or elect for another process. And that process can include interviewing all the candidates. What the policy also, or the process also provided for is that the council could make it another decision. For example, you could say, in this process of the four recommendations, we would like to appoint three of them and decide through another process who would go that fourth seat. And so that was also integral to the policy because the city council wanted it clear that while they were establishing the subcommittee, they were not relinquishing any of the powers that the city council has to appoint members to body.
So can we interview additional applicants for those that were not involved?
The city council can decide. So it will, it could take a majority of the city council to decide, of course. You have before you the recommendation from the committee, and the city council can decide to accept that recommendation and appoint, or say, we would like to embark on another process and interview all the candidates, or another process. But it is, as a council, it's the council's decision, and so it's going to take a majority to provide that direction.
And I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, in Zoom land, I can't tell if it's frozen or you're just pausing.
It's definitely, okay, I apologize. This selection is so important, and understandably, if there are three of you that want to proceed with this and don't want to allow other councilors to interview, then I guess I'm waiting for a motion. I think it's unfortunate. It is an imperfect process. But I believe we could quickly move forward if other councilmembers are satisfied with interviewing and not interested in moving forward with having to interview anymore, then I respect that their minds could stay where they're at. That's absolutely fine. I'm not able to know and hear on why I would vote over one person over the other, and it's not about trusting. I trust, I trust people's judgment, just it's, we're people, we have different views on things. We don't just allow Councilman Salazar and Councilman Hamilton to vote on everything the council does. We're elected to do our job, and we're not being allowed to do our job here. That's how I feel. It's very difficult, what I'm going to abstain, because it's not fair for the people I didn't, I didn't hear what their answers were to any of these questions. I respected the process. I didn't go to the meeting, that would have been so awkward, right? Go to the meeting to hear the answers. I was relying on being able to interview these applicants. So last night I asked if, if, if Councilman Salazar, Councilman Hamilton, if you were in my shoes, wouldn't you want to be part of the interview process? I know, but that's your decision. My decision is, I want to be there. And it's not a matter of the integrity of fairness, it's a councilman's, a councilperson's responsibility to appoint and to be involved, not to be on the sidelines. And this is putting two councilmembers who want interviews to be put on the sidelines. So it was, it's an imperfect, government's imperfect, but when you realize that there's a mistake, doesn't mean that you proceed with that mistake. You fix what's, you fix what's wrong. And I think this is wrong, ladies and gentlemen. So here we are.
Yeah, I think there's clearly different interpretations of the process, and that in and of itself is very concerning. I wanted to just kind of follow up on the earlier comment about that other interviews are not recorded. That is true, they're not recorded, but we also haven't had any interviews in person since at least March of 2021. And so the fact that these were in person, I don't think was necessarily something that was an expectation of the public who may be interested or of ourselves that, you know, may have wanted to attend. And I think the fact that this is the only situation we're in, there are interviews happening where the council isn't present. I mean, I think that Melissa goes a bit and beyond when we interview committee members to not just get a quorum, but to make sure that all councilmembers are present when interviewing every single candidate for every single committee and commission that we have. In fact, I can't remember a time that a councilmember of the five of us was not present in the interviews. That's how seriously we all take these commitments from, you know, our community. So I just want to point out that it's not recorded, but it's also the first time that all the councilmembers are not present at the interviews, and it's also the first in-person interviews that have happened since COVID, and the fact that only 10 people would be allowed in, if they even knew about it, would mean that of the 26 people on tonight's meeting, only, you know, 10 would be allowed in, right? So we'd actually be leaving out a majority of the people who are present at tonight's virtual meeting. I also just wanted to say that, you know, that the questions regarding the future of the foundation, regarding, and just looking at the questions, what are your thoughts about the foundation's current strategy? What are your thoughts on a long-term vision for the foundation? They are very broad questions. They're not necessarily specific to the listening session, which I think would have been really helpful to understand, you know, what's been read, what's the understanding. But also, we didn't get any answers, right? There's no notes on what the answers were on these, and they're incredibly important, again, considering that we're talking about the remainder of the funds and the community's input that's already happened. And I think the last part is just really reiterating the importance of tightening up the process. This is the only time that something has been done like this. It's very concerning to me that at least two of the members of the council agree that this was not the interpretation that was had, and it was actually never discussed whether you needed consensus to interview all applicants or whether just one councilmember can make the request. And so I think that it's fair today that in practice, we generally use consensus, but that has never been in writing, we never discussed it, and that night, what we had all agreed to is that should there be a request for interviews of all the applicants, that we were reassured over and over that that would be possible. And it's sounding like that is not going to be possible and that we won't have a say in, you know, how over 50% of the board who will decide to help 30 to 40 million dollars in San Bruno's being spent, well, we just won't have the opportunity to have those interviews.
So this is an, absolutely, this is an imperfect process, and as I said previously, I will not be supportive of repeating this process ever again. The, yeah, this, what brought us here and where we are right now, this sucks. Because taking either, taking either path of pushing ahead with a vote now to accept these, to accept the nominations, puts two councilmembers on, to the side, and, well, three, but two who wanted to be part of the, who want to be part of the process, puts them to the side. But I go back to my earlier statement of when we agreed and we, even though we had that, that option was there for the council, and Linda, I'm sorry, the council always means the majority of the five of us. I've never seen any time when councilmate is interpreted as one person can go to it. That's not a thing. If it said council, individual councilmembers may, then that's what that would mean, but it's not what it said, it said council. If the process, if the subcommittee's process, when we got down to that last night, when we came together with our remediations and hashed it out to come up with the four, if that process was all over the place, and we, and there were, you know, nine of the 11 people in the running, and we had to take multiple rounds of voting and all that stuff to get to where we were, I would probably be much more supportive of just saying, okay, let's just throw that out and start over again. But it wasn't. It wasn't like that at all. It was, there was a clear consensus. There was, there was just a little bit of debate on just a couple of things, but we got to these, this slate of applicants far more quickly than I believe any of us believed would happen. Because the process that we had in place was strong and clear. So again, I am fully supportive of throwing this process aside and not doing it again, but I feel that it would be a, we would be doing a disservice to the members of the board who participated in the subcommittee, and we would be doing a disservice to the applicants to throw all this effort out and start over again.
I'm just going to ask Councilmember Salazar if he has any comments, because everybody's had two, aside from you and I, we've had a opportunity, I just want to make sure that you're given the same opportunity to have another discussion, and then there is action being requested of a yes or no to the recommendation. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think Councilmember Hamilton expressed my sentiments exactly. It's definitely not a perfect process, and over the past several years, we've been working on defining a number of policies and procedures on how we should conduct our business, and it's not simple. None of the discussions have been simple or none of them have had unanimous agreement. And yes, this process is dramatically different from what we've done on any other committee and commission, but in our policies and procedures, it's called out separately, and this body is, it's a different sort of organization. It's, it has a higher standard that we have to meet, as the mayor pointed out. It's a 401(c), there are legal requirements that have to be met, and the people that we appoint to it have to, they have to be able to perform at that level. And that's why I think it was really important to have the members, you know, current members of the board participating in it. Now, I agree with Councilmember Hamilton that absolutely before this happens again, we need to go back and revisit it, but there are several components of this process that I think have to be preserved, and including the board members is one of those things that I think is critical. I think having an agreement on standard questions that are presented is also important. That's how civil service interviews are conducted, and it provides for a lot of fairness across board. It prevents, you know, any one candidate from trying to game the system and highlighting things that they may or may not want. And so, you know, there are some things that we need to consider, and I am very sorry that not all the council agrees that we should move forward on this, but I am committed to the path that we've taken. You know, the, we've gone a long way in doing this. Every one of our meetings was a public meeting, they were all posted pursuant to law and following the Brown Act. I believe that participation in those meetings by a third councilmember would have been a violation of the Brown Act, because the reason we create subcommittees is because generally it can't be a majority of the council acting in a subcommittee. So while it may not have been fully open to all the members of the council, it was a public process. Minutes were published for each meeting. I believe we did everything in accordance to the law in making those meetings accessible. City Hall was kept open during those times, so people could have participated had they wanted to, but in my experience, members of the public rarely attend interviews, and before COVID, all of the interviews were conducted in person at the senior center, usually right before a meeting, and rarely, I don't think ever, I saw members of the public participate in those. So again, I am committed to this process. We're very far down this path, and I still believe that we need to do this, and like Councilmember Hamilton, I will support revisiting of the process, and I'm going to suggest that we move forward and hope that the council can get behind our recommendation.
So is there any motion or action by council on this topic?
I'm going to defer to my chairman from the subcommittee to make the motion, and if he's willing, I will wholeheartedly second it.
I make a motion that we appoint Paclyn, Melissa Moreno, Subia Perry, and Irving Torres to the San Bruno Community Foundation.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, thank you for reading the name just for clarity. Motion and seconding has been made. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Hi.
Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, just, this is slate, correct? All four, we're voting on all four?
Yeah, correct. I made a motion for all.
Okay, no.
Councilor Salazar.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
I'm going to abstain.
And Mayor Rico Medina.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And with that, again, thanks to the ad hoc and Leslie for all the work and time. Congratulations to the four members, and we wish everybody well. With that, can we please move on to the next item of agenda?
Item 7(c), adopt a resolution to approve the 2021 San Mateo County multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan.
This sounds like something just perfect for the fire chief, maybe.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, our incoming fire chief. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm here to give you a presentation on the local hazard mitigation plan. In your council packet, you should have a copy of the staff report, a proposed resolution... In your council packet, you should have a copy of the staff report, a proposed resolution for your consideration, and a copy of the local hazard mitigation planning partners throughout San Mateo County. Our agenda for this evening is to read the background about the local hazard mitigation plan and what it is, an update on its current status, our process moving forward with the hazard mitigation plan, and an opportunity for the council to ask any questions you have of me this evening. Next, love. So what is the local hazard mitigation plan? The local hazard mitigation plan is a planning document that allows the city and the county of San Mateo to achieve compliance under the Disaster Hazard Mitigation Act of 2000. Originally, this plan was developed and required by FEMA for local jurisdictions and counties to comply with that plant, that mitigation act. And the initial process started back in 2005, and there's been three iterations of that project, and we're currently on the fourth iteration of the hazard mitigation plan. The current plan and its process is being administered with the planning partners throughout San Mateo County, throughout all the local jurisdictions, as well as the county of San Mateo, and it's being kind of coordinated through a contractor called Tetra Tech. So what is it about? The local hazard mitigation plan for the purposes of the city of San Bruno is a, is a wide use of resources that increase our coordination throughout San Mateo County and the jurisdictions throughout the county, including cities, towns, and special districts, and also the unincorporated portions of San Mateo County. This year is particularly important because we had a total of 36 planning partners throughout this process, including all 20 municipalities, 15 special districts, and the unincorporated area of San Mateo County. And so it's a, it's a great participation throughout San Mateo County, and it has definitely increased from last cycle of this local hazard mitigation plan. Why do we want to have a hazard mitigation plan? The city and public basically will benefit from the hazard mitigation plan's implementation. It provides updated information on potential natural hazards and the most appropriate type of mitigation that we can conduct for each of the identified hazards, and it makes us, most importantly, eligible for FEMA funding. Again, it's a great planning document for, for the natural hazards that we have associated with our city and throughout the county, and again, it provides that FEMA funding opportunity. And the city, our proactive actions, along with the other jurisdictions throughout San Mateo County, will allow the, the public to benefit, making us again eligible for that FEMA funding. So how is the plan developed? Again, as a whole county, we worked collectively, using grant funding to provide the contractor development mitigation plan with Tetra Tech. There was a planning team, a steering committee, and all the local jurisdictional planning partners that participated in this process. The steering committee itself met once a month, and the plan itself was developed in a total of three phases, and it was chunked up because there's a large body of work that has to take place throughout that planning process. So the goals of the local hazard mitigation plan are to protect life and property, including protecting the health and safety of the communities throughout San Mateo County, and this is also a nationwide program that is done through, throughout all states in the nation. It engages our whole community to better understand the hazards of the region and ways to reduce their personal vulnerability to those specific hazards. It helps us promote hazard mitigation as an integrated public policy and standard business practice throughout our community, and it integrates, you know, in the last few years, climate change in the strategies to increase our resiliency as a community and to the critical facilities that we have throughout the community and from the impacts of that climate change. It allows us to protect and preserve the environment and develop, implement hazard mitigation strategies that would potentially use public funds in an efficient and cost-effective way by not only using resources in the city of San Bruno, throughout San Mateo County, and again, access to those FEMA funds that could potentially be available. Another goal is to develop a hazard, what we call hazard mitigation strategies, and these are strategies that eliminate disparities and provide access to quality services to all underserved and under-resourced and ineffectively serviced individuals and families throughout the communities and the county. It provides improved community emergency management capabilities throughout the city and the county collectively as a coordinated approach. And an important component of this process over, and this process is typically done on a five-year basis, again, is the application of what we call Equity Lens. It adds some granularity to the analysis that we have to find who the impacts of people in underserved portions of our community, and collectively, the baseline results and the hazard results of the Equity Lens showed a distinct increase in impact to people when the Equity Lens option was added. I just go back briefly. The Equity Lens tackled, it was not a mandatory portion of this process, but it was tackled by 18 jurisdictions throughout the county, including the city of San Bruno's efforts for the local hazard mitigation plan. We thought that was an important component of the process. And speaking about the mitigation action plans, on a, on a high level, these mitigation action plans are plans that we can accomplish mainly in the next five years, as well as some projects, what we call Blue Sky projects, which are high-level projects that are typically kind of big, big picture projects that we would try to accomplish if we had the funding, but currently, you know, those, some of those projects that are Blue Sky projects, there's not current funding available for. So an example of some of the mitigation projects and strategies that we have in, in our disaster mitigation plan and generally are an increase to our public awareness for disaster preparedness. We do that here through our community preparedness committee and other efforts locally to be able to inform the public about disaster preparedness, improving emergency planning, providing incident command training to staff of public safety and city staff that support our emergency operations center, redundancy in our water systems and fuel supplies and generation of power to support those, those facilities during the emergency, education programs to better inform the public of the risks of local hazard that exists throughout our community and throughout the county, and broadening awareness of community warning systems. Those community warning systems include SMC Alert, the San Mateo County's community warning system, ICAUZ, and WIA, and other community warning systems that we have available to the public. And lastly, updating the city's, what we call the EOP, or the Emergency Operations Plan, which is an effort we should be undertaking shortly. You see before you on the screen, there's two different components. There's volume one, is the entire local hazard mitigation plan for the county of San Mateo as a encompassing document that is an umbrella document that covers the whole county. And then volume two, in that entire plan, it covers all what we call the local annexes. And those annexes are specific to each city and local district. And I have before you the local annex for the city of San Bruno, that's the cover page you see before you under volume two, and it's included in your packet. So next steps for local hazard mitigation plan. They've done an internal review, there was a steering committee, we've had a public review portion. This local hazard mitigation plan at the county level and here locally in our, for the city of San Bruno, has done an agency review through the Office of Emergency Services, through the state of California, and FEMA at the federal level. Those reviews have been accomplished and approved, and they are waiting for city council adoption at this stage for the final approval through all the local jurisdictions in San Mateo County. Once those approvals are, are done at the local and county level, they're sent back to FEMA, and the final approval comes back to us as that local hazard mitigation plan. And it's fully adopted at that point. So moving forward, the plan typically, like I said, has a five-year lifespan, so it's an important planning document for this five-year period. Important, very important to note, the plan can be updated if conditions change. If we find things that haven't been covered in the, the current plan or conditions change that we need to modify, we have the opportunity actually to modify the plan as we move forward. This is an important document that will serve to guide us for our priorities for the future, for the next five years, to, to address this local hazards and disaster mitigation. And again, it's required for that hazard mitigation grant opportunities. And now I'll just leave it to the council if you have any questions for me this evening.
Thank you, Chief, for your presentation and information. Any questions from colleagues to our chief? Well, Chief, see, you did so well, there, there are no questions. Thank you again. This is an action item, it's a resolution. Is there any action by council?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution adopting this local hazard mitigation plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, city clerk can work that one out. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number eight, comments from council members. First item, item A, Councilmember Mason. Follow-up requests on ecology, contractual agreement with the city of San Bruno, host an annual fundraiser for the San Bruno schools, request any written agreements, amendments, changing the terms. If none exist, request the remedy from ecology to San Bruno schools. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, thank you. I think this has already been addressed, but the, these requests first came in approximately spring of 2020, so it sounds like these are being addressed as part of the conversation. We had a special meeting at 5 o'clock and then the item tonight at the regular council meeting, so I look forward to seeing what that review is and then hopefully the remedy and then what we can do moving forward. So I think that's it. And I, I don't know if I should mention other comments. Is this the time for the other, for the comments, Mayor Medina, or did you want to do your comment and then go back to the full council?
No, that would be great if, if you're ready.
Okay. So I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate our new members of the San Bruno Community Foundation. Unfortunately, we had quite a debate around the process and some of our disagreements around the process, but I do want to make clear that the, the conversation around the process doesn't impact the individuals that were selected tonight, and so I do want to seriously and sincerely congratulate those board members, and in particular, the only candidate that I'd interviewed in the past that I just want to point out is Supria, that you kept trying, and I think a couple of council members have mentioned in the past, so I'll mention this time that, you know, if you don't make it the first time, keep trying. We have committees, we have commissions, and we are in need of, you know, community members that volunteer their time, so, so I just wanted to congratulate her and congratulate the rest of the, the board members. I also just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. This is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, and I was hoping that maybe the city manager could highlight, I can't remember the date, but this is our first annual tree lighting ceremony in downtown because the rack is being built, and maybe it could be a highlight of the date of that tree lighting ceremony for the public, which I know I'm looking forward to, and I think we're all looking forward to going into the holidays this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor. There were requests to mention the, the day of the tree lighting ceremony. I'm responding to that, sorry.
Sure.
So, to the mayor, the, the tree lighting will be on Friday, December 3rd. We are changing the location, of course, that will be at Centennial Plaza because of the construction of the new aquatic and rec center, and the city staff will start to push out that information in various forms. As normal, it is normally held on Thursday, but given that it will be downtown, and I, I, I think we are hoping that Santa can, can arrive here in San Bruno and also jingle around the block. And so we will be encouraged, that was a very nice event last year, I'm sorry, for COVID-19, and actually, given the new location at Centennial Plaza, may actually be, be a nice event paired with the tree lighting so that the, the fire truck can go around to the various neighborhoods in the city. And so we're looking forward to that event and we will advertise soon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is Rico Medina. First item is Reimagine Sam Trans. I, I put this on because we, we were scheduled or was, hoped to have a presentation from Jessica from the transit district. That did not occur, so I thought it was important. On November 3rd, I went to about an hour briefing, or Zoom briefing, just to hear about how it may affect San Bruno, affect more of the north. I've spoken to the mayors of, or vice mayor of Pacifica, Brisbane, South San Francisco, and Nobre, just to get their input as well and to see. This is a little wordy, but understand that I kind of need to read this because it's very specific. How it's listed is enhancements in service will include more frequent services on routes to, on El Comino Real for us. They heard from riders from across the system, again, more countywide, that they want more weekday, evening, and weekend service. They will continue the current 15-minute service on the El Comino Real on weekdays, but will double the frequency on weekends so that the bus line operates every 15 minutes seven days a week. The hours will remain the same, that's weekdays 4:30 a.m. to 1:30 a.m., and extended hours to 2:30 a.m. on the weekends. Route 141 service will be realigned and frequency reduced to every 60 minutes, however, Route 121 will cover substantially all the areas formerly covered by Route 141. This will impose service frequency and hours of operation will increase to certain segments of the former 141. New routes connecting San Bruno to SFO, Redwood City, and East Palo Alto, new route 124 connecting Daly City's BART, Skyline College, and school service will not change through routes, however, the numbers may be different than what they're accustomed to today. There are obviously some service relocations, which include the route of 141 will be shortened to the end at Tamperand and decrease in service frequency from 30 minutes to one hour, and Route 140 is being eliminated. Route 121 will cover most of this service reduction. Eliminations of Route 398, Route 398 has a very low ridership and is duplicated by other route services with almost all users of Route 398 taking the bus or intra-county trips. We believe that there will be other options for most riders. And, and it goes on, and I may just forward some of this to council. So again, this is the Reimagine Sam Trans, so what they did is they went out and they looked to everybody through the county. So you have things that is based on ridership, and what it is, is eventually there will be an adoption by the Sam Trans to go ahead and do this. However, it does not preclude a need that may arise, it does not preclude that if something needs to be modified, it can be done. It's not to where this is only like for 10 years and we don't, it's not visible. So I think it was important for us to know, I encourage my colleagues, if you want it, please go online. I am having another briefing, I've asked for another one in regards to San Bruno specifically tomorrow afternoon. It also, at the senior center, it does take the route from about three minutes to six minutes. I have asked staff the Sam Trans, and they are saying that one letter they received in regards to that concern, and that was from a San Mateo resident, in, in regards to the San Bruno senior center. So also being updated on that. So just wanted to offer that, and if you have any questions, since I would want to probably listen and digest from me, thank you, certainly can do that offline. And the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors redistricting, this is something that I did want to get on presentations and announcements, but I wanted to get somebody from the county, and I, I know people are starting to follow it a little bit more. It was at the Board of Supervisors this morning, they're going to continue the listening, but honestly, what, in the end result is... But honestly, what, in the end result is it's going back to the subcommittee, and it is going to be discussed and reviewed. There were two maps, Yes Boza and the Unity. This was a group of folks that were appointed by the Board Supervisors, and the League of Women Voters interviewed the applicants, gave a slate, a recommendation to the board, and they approved it. And so it was by a vote of eight to seven that they recommended. And so that was somewhat close, but they're also looking to what they call, no one likes the term of it, the mini-change. And one of the maps has us, San Bruno in District 3, the coastal district, which for me would be rather unique. And again, I think we deal with density, we deal with flooding, we deal with airport noise, we deal with some similarities to the district that we're in with our neighbors. And I, there you go. And I think, and I think that that's important. I've already reached out to a board member, and I'm going to reach out to a couple others. I encourage you to, if you have any feelings, let me know, because I'm certainly going to echo those that were echoed today by a member or two, and I appreciate that. But going into the coastal, nothing wrong with the coast or District 3, I just find that not maybe the best fit for San Bruno, me personally. But this is going to happen. It is a decision rendered for December the 14th. They have to have it done by the 15th of December, and this will be good for ten years. So it's very significant. I think we need to start, you know, we really need to be engaged and focus on some of these regional measures that are going to have long-term effect. So I think they had about thirty-one speakers today, so I just kind of wanted to pass that information on. And our Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want to cut you short at all, but that is very, very important. People should pay a little more attention to how the redistricting is going to be there and in San Bruno. For my council comments, I have a couple, and I apologize in advance because maybe they're a little long. But here we go. Congratulations, yes indeed, to the new members of the San Bruno Community Foundation. I hope no one takes my choice to abstain the wrong way. I am sure the council will fix the appointment process in the future. So Movember, right? You know what Movember is? It's that time of year again. This organization uses mustache as the driving symbol of the movement. Movember focuses on men's health in three key areas of prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and mental health and suicide prevention. Movember aims to increase early cancer detection and effective treatments, and ultimately reduces the number of preventable deaths. Besides annual checkups, the Movember Foundation encourages men to be aware of family history of cancer and to adopt a healthier lifestyle. To learn more, please go to movember.com. A quick update on a report out from Downtown Improvement Ad Hoc Committee. Great to hear that the tree lighting is going to be December 3rd downtown. There was an impromptu downtown trick-or-treating. It was a lot of fun, and a lot of people were showing up there. We're talking about setting up our first community meeting. We're exploring a Facebook group to improve community communication, and discussing upcoming plans for the holiday season. So there may be more than one day that Santa Claus is downtown. The Ad Hoc Committee has also been working a little bit with this great announcement from the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors that approved the Shock Local San Mateo app that rewards San Mateo County community members when they shock local. We're looking forward to bringing it to San Bruno as in the first expansion of program. So looking forward to that. And yes, everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Veterans Day as well. And everyone, thank you for your service, and that includes you that. So, thank you.
Mr. Hamilton, council member?
First, thank you, Vice Mayor, for giving the update from our Downtown Improvement Subcommittee, or Ad Hoc Committee, I apologize. My comment, I wanted to send out, first, congratulations again to the, to the new members of the Community Foundation. And a thank you to everyone who applied. As was noted in the packet, all of the applicants who did make it through were, are going to be contacted to, and asked to participate in some of many subcommittees that that particular body has. So, and, you know, like we said repeatedly, everybody brought a lot to, a lot to the table. And we appreciate everyone for applying. For my, my specific comment, I wanted to thank and congratulate staff on the implementation of the Prime Gov. I've been using it tonight to follow along with the agenda and be able to jump right into each staff report. It's wonderful. Such a massive improvement. I mean, we said this already when it was, when we approved it and during the announcement that it was live, but this is the first meeting where, you know, can see it in action. And it's really, it's really been a huge, huge improvement. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved with bringing this tool, not just for us who have to conduct these meetings, but for the public, makes it so much easier to follow along with what's going on. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and happy Veterans Day.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. As we go into the holidays, it's, you know, we have to look forward to, you know, better times coming out of two years of a pandemic, really hoping, you know, for happier days ahead, better times ahead, and, you know, looking forward to this holiday season and slow return to normalcy. I'm starting to see some signs that things are getting better, including this tree lighting that's coming up, looking forward to that. So also wanted to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Hamilton for his leadership on the Subcommittee. I, you know, I think we agreed that it was a difficult process, but, you know, Councilmember Hamilton and I don't always agree on everything. We had good, healthy discussions, but definitely appreciate his leadership there and him stepping up to chair that committee and driving the nominations to a successful conclusion. And also want to add my congratulations to our four new foundation board members. We're expecting great things from you, so welcome and look forward to working with all of you. And lastly, I wanted to offer my deep gratitude to the, to the four board members that are leaving the foundation. Nancy Kraus, John McLaughlin, Emily Roberts, and Tim Ross. I wanted to thank them for their service, acknowledge their contributions, and wish them well on any future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you all. And Vice Mayor, you too, me also, I thought you were going to talk about the redistricting, so I had other items still, but, but it's okay, because then we can adjourn from here. So let me just go down my list a little bit. The last Friday, I met via Zoom, of course, with somebody from Josh Becker's office. We primarily talked about the litter and encampments on our freeways and the Caltrans, and the, shall we say, at times, the frustration and challenge that exists. This gentleman will be coming to, taking a walk with me throughout the community coming soon. And it was also, I brought up to them that I'm considering having the north and/or other mayors, as, when they rotate in, to dialogue this as a collective. With Zoom, might as well use those resources. We used to do north county, so I'm wanting to reestablish that, but also try to focus on those entities and the Caltrans, because I know it's not just us alone. I spoke to my colleagues, there is a concern on other elements. I also wanted to acknowledge that last night, there was a mural on San Mateo Avenue that was a combination of cappuccino talent that drew it, thanks to the Lions who facilitated it and obtained permission, which honored Harry Costa, who was driving the yellow Corvette that he always drove in the Posse Parade. In the back of the fire truck is Bob Marshall Senior, who, him and Paula who was there, and Gail was there. He always rode the fire truck during the Posse Parade, and they looked forward to that. And also, some of the folks that are on the mural, also someone's grandmother, someone's relative. And so it was very, very poignant, and even one of the young people, one of the artists said, you know, there's eight butterflies, and those represent the eight lives that were lost in that PG&E pipeline explosion. So it was a lot of really deep sentiment, and so it was a very nice event that the Lions put together. I have to bring, again, about CAP, because last Wednesday, they did a prep round. They've never done that before. It was the first time, and they made history. And they brought everybody together, they had the cheerleaders, they had everybody. I led it off, trying to get the crowd going for the big game. And on Thursday, as I told you, the mayor and I, at Rotary Function, made a wager, which we will make sure that gets taken care of. And that Thursday night, I spoke at the football team's final dinner before the big game. And then, I know the Vice Mayor was there too, Friday, JV and the Varsity both won their games, and made me happy because I didn't have to wear red tonight. So I was happy about that. And finally, the screenshot behind me is an event I attended on Sunday afternoon, noon in Foster City, representing San Bruno. There was several, several other electeds that were there from the county and the county manager, and it was with Jackie Spear. And it is a representation of each flag is a person that has passed due to COVID in our county of San Mateo. And it was the, to bring focus on that and the realization, and people who have lost someone, to go ahead and write their name on that flag. That is going to be displayed, that is over by the Leo Ryan Memorial Park, and that will be available for about a week or so. And there's also something you can get online. But it was very poignant, and so the speakers from, one doctor from Kaiser, as well as a pastor from East Palo Alto, was just phenomenal in both of their conversations. And the pastor has lost a sister, another very close relative. So he spoke from not only what he's had to do as a pastor, but also for his personal loss. So those are some things that have been going on. I also need to add, congratulations to those four that are appointed, and thank you to those four that have served the board well. And also a reminder again about Veterans Day to honor and give our thanks. And back at Golden Gate National Cemetery, we're starting to see somewhat of a turn back to normalcy. And also to everyone and to their families, a happy, healthy, safe Thanksgiving to each and every one of you. It's, hopefully this year will be a better Thanksgiving than last for many reasons. Also to my colleagues, you'll have to go into your email after you hear from our city attorney. We just received a link, Zoom link, for the closed session. So I don't, don't everybody, colleagues, don't think we're done yet. So we do have a closed session, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to take care of that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we will be moving into closed session for existing litigation, the City of San Bruno versus Sky Park, under the applicable provision of the Brown Act, and there will not be any report abolition after the closed session. So we can move into closed session whenever the city council is ready to do so.
Thank you, city attorney. So to every, to staff, to the community, to each other, let us wish all very best health and happiness, and a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving to all. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on December the 14th, 1:00 a.m. And colleagues, I will see you in our next Zoom. Good night, everyone.